Okay, it is eleven o'clock, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're here for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. If everyone could turn off or silence your cell phones and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll start off with approval of the agenda. I had one proposed change for fellow commissioners, which is to move Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three, I believe, the Animal Shelter Discussion, up to Number Two. I think there's probably going to be public comment on that item, too, so it'll be good. And also for the Sheriff to be able to be present, so it was kind of buried deep in the agenda, but we'll move that up to respect everyone's time. But are there any other changes or things that need to come off the agenda?
Yes, I would like, Commissioner, I would recommend moving Item Number Three, Discussion and Consideration of the Leashman of Mount Elbur Hamoto, to the special meeting on December thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay, now we might move.
Commissioner Fiedler, I think technically, without the removal, the Animal Shelter might have been Twenty-Four.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I think I was going off of an already revised agenda. But yeah, just, yeah, thank you, just to be clear, it's the Animal Shelter Agenda Item, whichever number, Twenty-Three or Twenty-Four, depending on the version, but we'll do that.
I have no problem with that, that looks good, and I don't have any other changes.
I'm fine with it, too. Okay, that look for a motion to approve the agenda with those two noted changes, moving up the Animal Shelter Agenda Item in the order and moving to a later date, the Motocross Lease.
So moved?
Second motion, great. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. So that slightly amended agenda is approved. We'll move to Community Information Items. I have none, Commissioner Mudge?
I don't have anything today.
Okay, great. So turn to public comment. I wanted to say, the first Agenda Item that we will move to in a minute is the Sanctuary Welcoming Letter of Support topic. I think a lot of you are here for that. We will take public comment during that Agenda Item. So for now, I want to ask for public comment on things not on the agenda. So if anyone has public comment on other items, and typically, we do this so that you can raise awareness for us, you know, and get prepared to discuss it at a future meeting. So anyone online or in the room looking for public comment on items not on the agenda?
Do you want us to ask folks out here?
Oh, yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Does anybody have public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
Is that silent? Is it no?
Exactly.
Are there a lot of folks out there?
Yeah.
I just can't see.
Maybe we should have had this in the court?
It's being used.
It's being used today.
Yeah.
I think there is, I think there's some.
Hello? Hi. I, yeah, probably didn't hear, I just wanted to say, we will, you know, the public comment for right now is for items not on the agenda. So our very first Agenda Item will be the sort of Sanctuary or Welcoming Designation Discussion. So if your comments on that, we'll hold it until we get into that Agenda Item.
Well, it's on that.
So we'll hold, I think there are a lot of people here, so we're gonna handle that Agenda Item when we get to it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I think with that, looks like we can head in. So I just wanted to start off, so moving to that first Agenda Item on Discussion and Consideration of Lake County Becoming a Welcoming Community, Providing Staff Guidance on How the VOCC Wishes to Issue Such a Designation. Just wanted to start off, I mean, this is a big discussion, obviously, it's raised a lot of different perspectives and concerns in the community. We've heard a lot of that. I wanted to start off this Agenda Item by turning in a minute to fellow commissioner to read out our proposed Letter of Support for the community. And I think I want to start off with reading to everyone that letter, because I think there's a lot of discussion out in the community of things we may or may not do. And I think when you hear the letter, it will alleviate a lot of concerns. So I think it will be much more productive for all of us to hear public response to the letter of what we're actually proposing, rather than hearing a lot of comment on things that we're not proposing to do. I just think that's gonna, I honestly, waste a lot of people's time and energy if we hear a lot of comment on things, again, that we are not proposing to do. So again, just wanted to say, you know, this is an issue we've taken extremely seriously, that we've taken a lot of public comment on, you know, in person, through emails, through phone calls, had a lot of discussion with staff, with local law enforcement, with other jurisdictions, you know, school district, city of Leadville. Again, a lot of thought has gone into the different implications for our community on what may happen with immigration issues going forward in the coming years. So I think just with that.
There's copies of the letter for people out in the Hollywood.
These?
In Spanish and English.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
We could pass these around.
Yeah. As you said, I was gonna stop there and see if fellow commissioners want to make any comments off the bat, but then Commissioner Edwards was gonna read out the letter, just for the record.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Did you want to make any comments before we read the letter?
I don't have a lot to add, Commissioner Fiedler, I think you summarized it pretty well. And I do, I guess I will just emphasize and echo our intention to support our members of our community, but realize that there are other consequences and issues we need to consider. And I do hope that the letter gives, alleviates a lot of folks angst over a formal designation, because that is not our intention here today, so.
Yeah. Sheriff Speckman, do you want to add anything before we read the?
Yeah, I can, yeah, please. Yeah, I just basically want to say, I understand this is a complex issue. We have a lot of unknowns that we are looking at in our future. You know, change, change is gonna happen, change constantly happens, we have a change in federal administration, and that's what we're looking at, addressing potential issues. I believe this conversation has consumed me quite a bit over the past few weeks. I do appreciate that our idea was to try to create a unified government here approach to this. And when the discussion initially started, it came in pretty heavy with potential county ordinance. And we're at a point of a letter now, so we can, one, pause a little bit, see what's gonna happen. Two, I don't want to create an ordinance where it creates a situation where law enforcement is put into a difficult situation on deciding what laws they enforce and what laws they don't enforce, especially if they counter each other. So I think it's important that we just use this as an opportunity to address the community, address the concerns, and state things that we have been doing, will continue to do, and that's our future. There are state laws that we have to follow, and it's important that we follow those laws. There are things that we don't do that we'll continue to not do. These are, we're trying to address potentials here, but we don't want to put anything as a hard line of what we do and don't do. Considering what we do in law enforcement is constantly changing. Every situation is different, so it's important that we don't address specifics and that we address things like, this is who we are as people, this is how we treat people, and this is what we're gonna do going forward. So again, I'll be happy to dive into a little bit deeper after the letter's ready.
I just want to build on what Sheriff Speckman has said. We have, we have put a lot of thought into the development of this, what I describe as a letter of support. We have not done this in isolation. I myself have spoken to you on at least, what, two, three occasions on this, and gotten your opinion on things, as well as our District Attorney, Heidi McCollum, as this pertains to law enforcement. County Manager Bergman has reached out to our neighboring counties and taken a look at what they have done. We've spoken to people within the community that are on both sides of this issue. I myself spent probably, I don't know, over an hour last night responding to emails from probably most, a lot of people in the room here, as well as some this morning. So we have been listening to people. This is a contentious issue. We don't, there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know how all this is gonna play out, we'll just have to kind of wait and see. But in the meantime, what we have crafted is something that I think, and I think fellow commissioners agree, that is supportive, but it doesn't go so far as a declaration of the county as a sanctuary location. And as far as the city, there's a difference between the city and the county. I don't know what the city is going to do. We'll just have to wait and see on that. But in the meantime, this is what our letter says. Dear Lake County Community, The Board of County Commissioners and Lake County Sheriff's Office have received a wide range of feedback on Lake County becoming or not becoming a sanctuary community, and how that might impact the residents of Lake County. First, we would also like to acknowledge that many in our community are feeling a great amount of fear right now, either for themselves or for their friends and families. We hope that those of you who are frightened know that we are thoughtfully working through every scenario to ensure we, as a Leadville-Lake County community, are moving forward in a way that ensures safety and security for all. We deeply value the contributions of immigrants and are committed to treating everyone with dignity and respect. At the same time, there are legal limitations on the powers of local governments in matters related to immigration policy and enforcement. A sanctuary designation could expose the community to potential legal challenges, loss of federal funding, and draw more attention to our community, which could negatively impact our residents and vital public services that benefit all. In two thousand and nineteen, the Colorado General Assembly enacted legislation that restricts state and local cooperation with federal immigration authorities by prohibiting law enforcement officials from arresting and detaining an individual based on an immigration and customs enforcement detainer request. Lake County Sheriff's Office deputies are responsible for enforcing state law. Our priority is to ensure the safety and security of every community member, regardless of their immigration status. Local law enforcement may cooperate with federal agencies in certain situations to effectively prevent and address serious criminal activity that threatens public safety, such as crimes of violence or sexual assault. Our County Sheriff's Office and Judicial District have demonstrated their commitment to all community members, regardless of their immigration status, unless a person poses a threat to public safety. We will continue to honor that commitment and do not plan to change the way we operate. Instead of pursuing a sanctuary designation, the Board is focused on finding practical solutions to support immigrants and others in need. We are committed to strengthening services that assist with access to healthcare, education, legal resources, and community integration, regardless of immigration status. We are also working internally and with local and regional partners on contingency planning for our families who may be impacted. We hope that our strong partners will assist the community in bringing solutions and increased assistance to those affected by federal immigration policies, helping our neighbors find the best path for their security. The Board and Sheriff remain dedicated to addressing the needs of all residents, including immigrants, through inclusive policies and services. We are committed to continuing the work of making our community a place where everyone can thrive, regardless of background or status. We understand that this issue may continue to raise concerns, and we invite you to share your thoughts with us. As always, your voices matter, and we are here to listen and work together towards solutions that strengthen our community. We encourage our community to continue to be kind, respectful, and understanding as we navigate the future together.
Thank you. And maybe just note again that this will be signed by both the Sheriff and the VOCC. So I think, I appreciate you emphasizing that again, and how, you know, this, we thought it was incredibly important to have a joint and unified, you know, message to the community from local law enforcement and the county together. So I guess with that, again, see if anyone up here wants to make a further comment on the letter? Yeah, you know, and I think, before soliciting public comment on the proposed approach that we just discussed and read out in the letter, you know, I did want to say, I think it's really important to note that going forward, this is gonna be a really uncertain issue. We just do not know, you know, what changes in federal policy, you know, or state or local policy may be. You know, we don't know what the impacts are gonna be. And incoming future commissioners, all three of them, you know, will need to, you know, pay attention to this. And I think the community as a whole, including public input, will need to respond to how things actually play out in the coming months and years. So again, I think with that, I'll open up to public comment. And I would just really respectfully request that people respond to what we are proposing in the letter. I think there's a lot of views out there, you know, and I think what we'd love to hear is views, you know, on our proposed approach, not more wide-ranging comments on, you know, other approaches that aren't being considered here, you know, or broader, you know, statements of immigration policy. I'd really respectfully request that anyone who wishes to make public comment, keep it to giving us, you know, their input on the proposed approach in the letter. So with that, and we do try to keep it to, well, keep it to three minutes. We have a packed agenda and a packed room. I'll call on people. You need to state your name and local address, just for the record. If you don't wish to do that, you can, you are welcome to give us feedback privately. But we do need, for the record, to have a name and address when public comment is given.
Chief Fiedler, I recommend maybe trying to keep this to thirty minutes total, and if we get halfway through and it looks like there are more people, we might ask you to make your comments a little bit shorter.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, and again, I mean, good point, I'll say it more loudly, like, I suspect there's gonna be a lot of comment. We, you know, want to hear from you, but we would, again, respectfully ask that you, you know, try to be brief. If someone has already made a point that you wish to say, I mean, you could just say you agree with the previous point made. Again, don't want to tans down public comment, but want to try to be efficient and respectful of people's times here. Okay, in the back?
My name is Ryan Uyge, manager, this is six twelve West Eighth Street. The first thing I'd like to say about the letter, and I'm not demeaning anybody or anything, but you say immigrants, over and over, immigrants and immigrants. We're not against immigrants, we're against the legal immigrants. And then reading the letter, you're saying that you're not sure what you're going to do yet. But in the letter, it says that we are going to become a sanctuary city by what you're going to do here. You're welcoming these people in, you're gonna give them free healthcare, schooling, rides, everything. To me, that is a sanctuary city, and it's a welcoming place. And I'm against it. If you're breaking the law, you should be deported. And if you have to work with the federal government, or whatever you gotta do, you should not be here. And this is also an insult to people who are trying to come here illegally. They're waiting for years, and these people come in. The other thing it is, is it's gonna open up the bottle, it's gonna get around the state, and legal's gonna do this, and they're gonna flow in, probably. If we get thirty people here, or three hundred people, that's the end of this town. And that's all I got to say.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry, we didn't circulate lists, so does anyone else wish to make comment? I'll take in the room first, and then we'll go to online. So over here, just a second before, but I'm, yeah.
My name's April Fevers, I live in Chalmers, I'm at Mount Trevor Drive in West Park, and I want to comment on that. I do know of immigrant families already here that have been here over twenty years. And I think, and they haven't lived off the government or anything, they've made a living, they work. I think letting others come in is gonna put a magnifying glass on our town, and I think that's gonna put fear in them, and no, they shouldn't be here. You know, they are here illegally, but I'd hate to see those families that have worked decades to get booted for being good people when we're bringing in people we don't know anything about. And they could be good, they could be bad, do we want to open that, you know, take that chance? Just a month or so back, a man in Denver, Aurora, did hire, and has an illegal, to help with his work, and he raped his sixteen-year-old daughter. I mean, do we want a chance that? I, I'm scared, yes, I am scared, not just for me, but we don't know who these people are. They might have good intentions on the outside, they might have evil or mean intentions on the inside. We don't know these people, and it's just scary. And I can piggyback, I don't think they should be here anyway. Bottom line, it's illegal. And that's just, I agree with him.
Okay, thank you.
The letter did say.
Can you, sorry, for the record?
Ryan Bailey, Highway ninety-one. The letter did say immigrants, specifically throughout the entire letter. We don't care about immigrants, they're the people we want, like the family she just spoke of. Illegal immigrants that with a swipe of a finger on a phone, through an app that the federal government has provided them, can get debit cards, all kinds of setups for living here. They didn't apply for citizenship, they don't care about citizenship. They want the free stuff. And I also would like to know how the Sheriff distinguishes between what laws he's gonna enforce and what laws he's not gonna enforce. If they're laws, we have to enforce them, is that correct?
Yeah, I can clarify, I'm talking about creating laws that oppose current laws. And that was my concern with the ordinance, is if it's opposing laws, that's where that comment came from. So I'm not deciding what laws to follow, that's actually quite opposite of the point I was trying to make. So I apologize for the lack of clarity.
Very good, thank you. And we want immigrants, but we don't want the towns in the Midwest that received fifty thousand overnight. That's obvious, right? We don't have the room, we don't have the work, we don't have the housing, so let's take this cautiously. And if you ask me, I would say no, no sanctuary city, no sanctuary county.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, I'll take in the front here, and then, yeah, if we could start, maybe letting folks who are outside, who want to make public comment, start coming in, but we'll start here.
My name's Lauren Flynn, I'm a resident of Lake County, eight fifty-three Pete View Drive. I had to leave work in order to get here today. Your letter states that in two thousand and nineteen, Colorado General Assembly enacted legislation restrict state and local coordination of federal immigration authorities. Now, I'd like to read from you from the U.S. Department of Justice Criminal Resource Manual. Title eight, this is what Tom Holman is going to be using, USC thirteen twenty-four. Title eight says, defines, strict offenses related to aliens. Section one through five prohibits alien smuggling, domestic transportation, unauthorized aliens concealing harboring unauthorized aliens, encountering or inducing unauthorized aliens to enter the United States, engaging in conspiracy, aiding and abetting. Harboring offenses, any person who has recklessly disregarded the fact that an alien has come, entered, or remains in the United States is in violation of the law, concerns harbors shields detects, attempts to conceal harbor shield or detect any alien in a building or any transportation. The penalty for this is violation of eight USC thirteen twenty-four, smuggling and the conspiracy to hide aliens is a fine under Title eighteen and imprisonment for no more than ten years. Also, you need to know that in addition, the penalties provided here are if there is serious bodily harm or placing life in jeopardy. Moreover, if the violation results in the death of any person, the defendant may be punished by death or imprisoned by any term of years. I oppose this. As people have already said, we don't know who's coming in here. Sheriff has his hands full right now. Why are we placing his men and the police department and others at potential jeopardy where they may have to make these decisions? Why are we doing that? It's not okay. We want a quiet mountain town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take the green sleeve, yeah, Jeremy, yeah, go ahead.
Jeremy Burton, Lake County resident for about eleven years. One seventeen Lighter Street. Been a volunteer, first responder in this county for the better part of eleven years. And in regards to your letter, you're talking about educating, supporting health insurance benefits. We already have a very taxed infrastructure, okay? We can barely meet the needs and demands of our residents who are here legally, who support the community, and I don't see that we have the resources or the infrastructure, whether it be EMS, fire, law enforcement, to, the hospital, any of this, to be able to effectively take care of who's here, let alone an influx of up to who knows how many people. If you start looking at the statistics of people who have designated themselves as sanctuary states, they're getting bus loads, plane loads. Other cities put them on a bus, put them on a plane, and they're sent. We can't handle it. And like I said, I've worked with these in another capacity. Our law enforcement is taxed. As I said, since I moved here, the amount of sirens that we hear during the day, during the night, has increased tenfold. We don't have the space, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the fiscal or the monetary means to handle this situation. We can barely keep up, our streets are a mess, our schools, we can barely meet the needs of our students. We keep shuffling around, we're gonna consolidate, consolidate, consolidate. How can we invite people in if we can't even meet the needs of home?
Okay, thank you.
Patty Nagel, fourteen twenty-two CR thirty-six in Lake County. I had to pivot a bit from my planned, what I was gonna say. But, so the letter, it seems a bit vague, and like, you're both, you're trying to play both sides of the fence, kind of. Because in, whether calling it a welcoming county, sanctuary county, whatever you call it, it's still, I mean, taking care of our people here is one thing. Putting them on a path to citizenship would be the ideal, rather than trying to bring more in. You know, I echo what a lot of these people have already said about it's gonna be a demand on our infrastructure, everything. But I sense here in, in the letter, that that means more taxation because of all the demands that are gonna be put on us. In addition to that, I'll just read you part, a little snippet of what I wrote. With the unchecked and porous borders of the last four years, violent criminals and foreign terrorists have been sneaking through with a small minority of people actually seeking a better life. Many independent journalists at the border testify to the fact that most you're crossing are single, young, military-aged men, most of whom are from countries who consider us enemies. How will you vet them? Or is this a free-for-all? I can't imagine the scenario of LEOs, yet a greater population with questionable motives. And I just would like to point out, this is a really good resource. Kristi Hutcherson from Women Fighting for America. She's one of the people at the border, as is Michael Yon, Y-O-N, and Ann Vandersteele. They are constantly at the border and seeing horrible, horrific things, child sex trafficking, children coming over alone, it's horrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi guys, uh, Ryan Hill, one one four East fifteenth, uh, I prepared something. So thank you for allowing me and the rest of us to speak today. It's important to delineate what this letter is. Uh, as stated, it has been done with input of the community, when in fact, by the show of people here today, that this has not been discussed with us and given our consent. Uh, furthermore, a letter may seem innocent and modest. However, there was a letter drafted over two hundred years ago that was simply a letter, but was not law. It was the Declaration of Independence which stated our intent as a people and opened up an entire revolution that defined us as a nation. With that said, I come before you not as someone full of hate or privilege, as some have suggested, but as a hardworking member of this community. I stand here because I love this town, I care deeply for my neighbors, and I want nothing but the best for our families and future generations. Any decision, letter, designation, uh, anything of the sort at the county or city level, it is ultimately controversial. It deserves to reflect the will of the people who call this place home. Our voices must be heard, considered, and above all, followed. While sanctuary policies may have good intentions, they are not a one-size-fits-all, and they do not align with the realities of small towns like ours. We are not a city with vast resources. Instead, we have limited budgets, schools at capacities, and services that are already stretched thin. These policies could place additional strains on public services, housing, and local law enforcement, just to name a few. Burdens that hardworking families in the community cannot afford. More importantly, this decision risks dividing us at a time when we need unity the most. We are a community built on trust, relationships, and shared values. Let us adopt something that would, let us not adopt something that would create resentment or tension among neighbors, particularly when other and more practical ways exist. To those that say opposing this decision comes from a lack of love for our neighbors, I respectfully disagree. Caring for others does not mean we jeopardize our resources or community stability. It means finding solutions that work for everyone without compromising the future of this town. Finally, I urge you as commissioners to listen to the voices of your constituents, the people in this room and those not able to attend today. Do not move forward with such a significant decision. If it is important now, it will be important when the new B O C C board comes into office. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so a hand here.
Hi, my name is Ramona, and I'm from one hundred Fulton Circle. I have lived in Lethwa for thirty years, I have been coming to Lethwa since I was a baby, I have family here. My hometown, Esconded Valley, Mexico, is a sanctuary state. What's happening there, I don't want it to happen here. The crime has gone up, sex crimes have gone up, um, residents don't feel safe. Businesses aren't safe because people are in front of their businesses trying to get money from people walking in. Local businesses are closing down because of the illegals there. They're destroying my hometown. It's sad when I go back and visit, it's becoming dirty. The town, the city and the county tries to clean up after them, but it's hard because you move them from one spot, they go to another spot, and it's the same cycle. I don't want that to happen here, I want my kids, my grandkids to be safe, to walk down the street, to walk down to the neighbor's yard. I want my neighbors to feel safe. Sometimes we don't feel safe because of what we're hearing outside of Lethwa. Crime in even, in Eagle has gone up, I work there. There is robberies going on, somebody got robbed the other day at gunpoint at four o'clock in the morning. We're not used to that, we don't want that here. I want us to be safe, and that's all.
Thank you. Please.
Kim Hastings, four oh one Harrison. I appreciate the letter, but I still am confused on, to my understanding from the agenda, that this is going to a vote at the end of this discussion. Am I correct there?
Uh, or, or guidance to staff on what to do with the letter.
Guidance to staff and a vote, decision, it says.
A decision, yes.
A decision, so the decision, what is the question? Are we voting for a welcoming community slash change the name from sanctuary, so there's a vote here today? A decision, correct? This, this says, this letter, to my understanding, says we're not making any changes in anything we do. Then why do we need to vote if we aren't making any changes? If you vote today to make a change, then this letter is disingenuous. Thank you.
Commissioners, I wonder if it would be worth clarifying that question. I mean, I, I just say, like, for, for the room, like, we, we, we tend not to get into a back and forth on, on public comment. It's just for us to receive input, but I think that might be an important clarification to make again on the intent of, of the letter.
I mean, I would say that, that this is more of a dec, uh, acknowledgement and a message to the community, this is not a decision to change, I, so.
Then why is there a vote? If there's no chanting, why are we voting?
There is no vote, there will not be a vote, there will be, if, if any vote, it is to acknowledge and, and the letter and the message that we're putting out, um, but I don't anticipate a formal vote.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and to be clear, like, there, there, there's nothing attached to the letter that is a change in a local ordinance or law, or there's no policy guidance, you know, that's dictating anything to the sheriff.
But you just said that you were gonna give staff directions, so that's disingenuous.
With a little, with a little D.
That does, come on, what's the point?
No, like the.
Give me a break.
Okay, okay, so, please.
I'm Kimberly Windorski, two ninety East Monroe Street. I'd like to just piggyback off of what Kim was saying and what Ryan said. If it's this important that we move forward, whether there's gonna be a vote today, you guys are gonna make a decision, why does it have to be when you're less than a month on your way out? Why can it not be decided with the new commissioners coming in? And with you guys transitioning, transitioning them coming in, why does it gotta happen now, on your way out? I feel like this is really politically, um, has a political agenda, that you guys are trying to flip your fingers at us for some reason, because you're on your way out. Let the new people that are coming in make decisions for the community and hear our voices. Cause Sarah, you've been writing more than you've been listening, and I just think that it's, you guys are calling this a meeting and an agenda, and you're saying there's not a vote, Jeff, you said there is a decision, but I don't feel like you guys are being honest. And I think it should be held back until the new commissioners come in, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie Burton, J-A-I-M-E. I'm at one hundred and seventeen Lyer. I agree with most of the statements that remain here today. I feel that this town lately has been giving handouts by six hundred thousand dollars to pay people's rents and mortgages out of our taxpayer pockets, when we're stretched thin anyways. Um, and I feel that we need to start giving more handouts, meaning work with Full Circle and other groups that are already organized, work with the community-based health center at the schools, um, and strengthen those programs, uh, work with the Committee for Childcare, and make those stronger, and use resources towards that as opposed to creating more issues in town and more tax issues. That's it.
Thank you.
Christian Loma, there, uh, fourth to twenty-seven. Uh, I just wanna, you know, clarify a couple of things that I think are important for this. One, uh, in the agenda, it seems like this is purely a performative acknowledgement of our community and not a role change. Uh, I think that's a really important thing to, uh, mind ourselves. Personally, I think that's, um, a bit lacking, but that's my personal opinion. Uh, second, uh, immigrant, uh, community members, uh, in the entirety of the United States account for very minimal crime. In fact, if you're an immigrant, you are much more likely to.
You know, we're, sorry, this is not a discussion, this is input to the, to the board, this is not a back and forth with members of the public.
Um, if you are an immigrant, uh, in this community, documented or not, um, or in any community, you're much less likely to commit crime. The murder rate from undocumented immigrants is thirty-nine, or sorry, twenty-nine from the Department of Human Services, twenty-nine in the entire United States of America. Murders that were committed by members of the community who were undocumented. Twenty-nine, that's it. So this mass hysteria about crime and crime-ridden swings, reality is, any city is gonna have generally higher crime rates, and when you look at places that don't have high immigration, such as Mississippi, they tend to land higher in the crime rate than somewhere like New York that has much more immigrants. So this narrative of crime is just not true and held on anything other than just complete fear mongering, and I wanna clarify that for the record. Additionally, I want to acknowledge that, um, this just cannot possibly create existential crisis for our community because we are not offering anywhere for those immigrants to stay. We are not using, uh, we are not using any resources, the amount of white people that would be in there, not immigrants.
So this is not a back and forth between members of the public in this meeting. I, yes, that's what I'm here for, is to communicate.
Yeah, a large portion of our unhoused community is white. That, it sucks, and I hope that they do actually have an ability to stay in a homeless shelter. They deserve that, just like anyone else in this community does. We are not offering those services to immigrants or people who are outside of the community. We have not offered services to people who are newly coming in over anyone else. And if you look at any track record from any program put into place from any of our organizations, most of them have been towards community members who've been living here for a long time.
Christian, twenty seconds.
So my plea to, to the county commissioners is please just consider that this is not a decision that you are making that would have a long-term impact towards our community in any way, and that ultimately, this is something that I feel like is appropriate for you all to acknowledge that immigrants in our community deserve just as much rights as anyone else in our community, and it's not a big deal to acknowledge that they are members of our community.
Okay, fine, I, uh, before I call the next person, I wanna say this is for members of the public to give us feedback on the proposed letter, please. Please do not take up this time to respond directly to other things said by members of the public here, please. As people respect that.
Jeff, may I ask you a question?
No, no, I want to keep going, people who haven't spoken yet. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm Renata, uh, three thirty from Street. I'm living in Leadville thirteen years, and I am a immigrant. Uh, and I came all this way, you know, like to papers, pay, work for every dollar, pay the solo application, uh, lawyers and all the stuff, you know? I feel like that's a little not fair, you know? I was checked by the F B I, Interpol before I get papers, who I am. And I don't know who they are, maybe they're better people than me. But we don't know, because nobody can even check. And that's not for, fair for people like me, a lot of people like me, what we, I was separated from my family a lot of years too, you know? I, I, I get this all hard, how to survive by myself, how make family. I bought a house here, I paying taxes, I paying this property taxes, you know? And we have organization for helping, and we paying for this organization help to people. I just wanna feel safe. I stay in Leadville instead of being Denver, for example, buy cheapest house because I feel my kids, they can play on the street. They can ride bikes around this town. I live in Chicago, I couldn't left my kids for five minutes without watching every move. This is, where are we going? Uh, like a school? Uh, you know, uh, we have a more white people, check school, guys. I have a kids in the school all these years, you know, middle school, elementary school. You know, I don't wanna see every day police on the front and wondering, oh, something happened maybe to my kids. Why police is every day stay there? Because what, maybe another traitor, you know? Only about this, I'm not against immigrants, I am a immigrant, just do this legal help with organization, not like a whatever who wants can come, you know, and do whatever wants and move next day to the different town, you know? I don't know, more crime is here with locals. Maybe that's a true, but maybe enough. We have a locals dealers or, you know, we don't need even more, you know? Dealers from outside or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, so maybe a hand, no, okay, Gloria.
I'm Gloria Perez, I'm three six Comstock Court, and for the record, I'm your leader for an agenda I'm not willing to leave, but we'll make public comment. Um, I just wanna share that I hear a lot of misunderstandings, and I think when people refer to, you know, the long-term immigrants, um, that I think people believe that are all documented immigrants. That is not the case. The long-term families that have been here in Lake County, that work in Lake County, work in the resort areas, restaurants, we don't have farms here, but farms throughout the US, they represent a mix of documented and undocumented families. So to the point about, you know, people that will come in, um, the, you know, this, um, advocacy for, um, being a welcoming city is for the families that are here, that have been here a long time. Not to, and I, and I think people have this belief that, that, like Christian was, was saying, that we will just attract the criminal immigrants. That's not true. Um, again, the advocacy for making this a welcoming city, um, if you do the research, um, we are referring to the families that are here, that have been here, that work here. Um, I had mentioned it at another meeting, they are the people that, you know, go to our schools here. They probably are your neighbors, our church, in the same churches that you guys go to. Um, and I just, I've kind of, um, statement more than anything. Um, I think that one concern that we have seen with prior, um, administration is the criteria around, um, who represents a threat. And so I would just, um, you know, kind of guide you. I'm Sheriff Spackman, I'm kind of doing the research there too, um, when it's left very loose um, in an administration like the one coming in, it can be very dangerous. Um, and I think that that's a kind of guidance that we would hope that, you know, law enforcement, um, diligently works, um, on to ensure that, you know, the criteria again is who represents a threat. Um, and, and ensuring that, um, that law enforcement is trained, right? That they don't just can loosely use that criteria to, um, you know, make racial profiling, um, or just, you know, I don't like this person, and I can say that they represent a threat.
Thank you.
There's a lot of people on.
Yep, I, we'll get there. Well, hang, hang on one second, yeah. Try to eliminate, uh, shorter statements, yeah. And we have, we're summing up next in the back, but we'll, we'll get, so we, we, we are, uh, hearing a lot, uh, of public input, it is taking up a lot of time. I would respectfully ask people to really try to, you know, be, be succinct in, you know, if something's already been said, if you could just say that you agree with that previous statement, you know? Um, and we have a lot of people still here, you know, in the building, I assume a lot of people online. Um, again, I don't wanna shut down public input, but if you could, uh, really make an effort to be succinct in your comments and not just, you know, repeat ad hoc things that have been said, you know, uh, over the last thirty, forty minutes. Thank you, I think I saw a hand in the back.
All right, Matt, I'm being mentioned first, I have a counter today. I just, um, feel like, why do we wanna put ourselves into this like category where we're something different than everywhere else in the state? Why does Lethwa be part of the difference, some further like deep agenda that's going on? I don't understand, I mean, to me, it feels like there's nothing positive from trying to bring in more people if that's what happens, we don't know, why do we wanna know? Why do we wanna find out? That's why I wanna know. And, uh, it's like the drugs, you know, I don't think anybody touched on the drugs, I'm like, fentanyl, how many people are dying of fentanyl all across this country? Where is it coming from? It's not coming from our country, so I think it's, don't do it.
Okay, thank you, and again, I greatly appreciate being succinct, like, in the, here.
I was watching the news this morning.
So sorry, for the record, we have to state name and address, yeah.
Thomas, I was born and raised here, I've been here seventy-five years. And that, this morning I was watching the news, fourteen people in Aurora got arrested, same complex. And that, I had my son go down there, try and get work, and that, they were shoveling snow, paying fourteen, twenty-four dollars an hour. They got there at nine o'clock, you had to sign in by ten. When they got there, not one person locally got it. They gave all the jobs for fourteen bucks to the Venezuelans. And that, they said this morning, the Castle Rock is protesting this. Also, and that, there was seventy-nine million dollars in Colorado paid out for illegal immigration this year. Last year was ninety-two million, and that, where do we come up with that type of money? That money could have been spent on American people that live here elderly, and that the people could really use it in this community and other communities.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Shane Warner, one five two four Mount Massive. I've lived here, I was born here, grew up here, watched Leadville booming with climax. Then they fell apart after climax left. Most of the people I grew up with, like Matt, are now pushed out because the property taxes and everything have gone up to pay for work. I agree with Luna, we have lots of white people, if we're gonna call it that, out there on the streets that do need help, that are citizens protected under the Constitution of the United States and are eligible for this help. Why would we wanna spend our money to help someone that has done nothing for us, that is here illegally? We watched the hospital in the late nineties with just the immigrants that we had here at the time that were not documented, that did not pay bills and our emergency system went down. Do you really want to become a sanctuary city and have that much pressure put on the infrastructure?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we start, yeah, I, yeah. Thank you.
And you know we're all supposed to love our neighbor. But this thing is illegal immigrants coming in, not legal, you know, and that's the problem right here. But this is not a trial thing that Leadville's gonna be doing. It's been proven in Chicago, New York City, and all these places. Look what's happened to those cities. Chicago is approaching a billion dollars in debt with other problems that they had with crime and everything else. New York is the same way. These mayors and these people, they see what's happening here. It's been proven that these sanctuary cities are trouble. I, like I say, I support legal immigration, that's fine, but this business that's going on, what destroys with the fentanyl, the murders, even if one person is killed by a legal immigrant, it's bad, more alone, you know, more. And it's just something uh that we can't tolerate in a small community like this. We have, we're looking for affordable housing, just for what we have here now. Where are we gonna find affordable housing for new people coming in? Where are we gonna be able to support our hospitals, up here, our schools? It just don't make sense at all. And like I say, I think we should both know for sanctuary city.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just, I really can't see outside, I don't know if there are more folks who. Thank you. And again, sorry, just for that, you you need to state name and address in Lake County. And again, uh uh a plea to be succinct and just sort of agree or acknowledge previous comments, uh and be able to show the time, thank you.
Thank you. Uh my name is Diego Gonzalez, I live at one two four East Fifth Street, apartment seven. Uh honestly, I'm pretty scared just to be talking here right now. I'm an immigrant from Venezuela. I just want to say to the people who support legal immigrants, I came here legally on a student visa at sixteen, at eighteen, I lost my student visa because of an administrative error in the office at the school that I was attending. I was undocumented for five years after that. I lived in Korea on certainty constantly throughout that time. Um I was very lucky that my parents were here to help me cover the over fifty thousand dollars in lawyer fees, so that I can now have unemployment authorization. I have an asylum application pending. I just want to say, you can take the right steps, just don't end up in a vulnerable position, so just please keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, uh for, can everyone online uh check that you are muted? We're hearing some background noise, it's a little bit disruptive here.
Sorry, I think it's in the hallway because they can't hear you in here, they have it playing on the hallway.
Uh so feedback, I think you got you.
They can mute. Now it's under Max, I'll let him run it his out here.
I'm also online.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are you, go ahead, go ahead.
I, Grayson Cooper, one twenty-five West Seventeenth Street, here is myself today. Um I I want to echo and appreciate Diego and Christian and Gloria speaking. I know that there were some implications of the Constitution earlier and I want to remind us that the Constitution, you know, provides for not just citizens, but for people in the country. Um and if you look back at the Supreme Court has upheld this. Um so nineteen eighty-two Flyler v. Doe guarantees the right of all children, regardless of their documentation status, regardless of their parents' documentation status, to a free public primary and secondary education. And Arizona versus United States twenty-twelve held, the Supreme Court held that simply existing in the United States without documentation is not a crime. So I I personally will say that I'm in support of this, I personally don't believe that it goes far enough. I think, you know, the law of politics of if everyone's angry, you're probably doing something right. I think you're doing something right with this letter.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak out there?
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? I think they're probably gonna close it off.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh so I think that uh is everyone in the room, so we'll turn to Zoom, yeah, that's great. Uh Susan, we see your hand raised, give us one second. So if people online can uh raise hands, that'll create a queue for us. Um uh also, for folks who are writing comments, we will, we will, um you know, we we see those written comments in the chat function, so I know that comments you're posting there uh are are being seen. Um so Susan, you have your hand raised, uh please unmute uh and make your comment.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're loud and clear.
Okay, great, thanks. Um I also want to echo what Grayson said, a thank you to the commissioners for looking at some type of support for our undocumented immigrant community and families that may have some people that are undocumented, living with families that uh, living with people that are undocumented and documented together, so families could be split up. So I appreciate that you're looking at some way to support, even though it's not exactly what um some of our immigrants have asked for, but it does show the support of our community and help people feel uh safer here. I also really want to applaud um Diego's courage. And I know we're not supposed to respond, but what I really did want to add, and Diego started the conversation, is I do want people to understand that there are many people here in our community who while you say illegal, actually have legal paperwork that they were given at the border when you are an asylum case. There's other cases as well, but that's the one, if you can imagine what it would be like to do every, yeah, how bad your life had to be to leave your country and try to come in and they came in through legal channels and are waiting for their due process in court for their asylum case. So I just want to make sure we understand that the people we're talking about are also here legally. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I see Emily Olson with your hand raised next, you can unmute and make your public comment.
My name is Emily Olson, I live at six oh four Dexter. Um I just want to echo what our, my neighbors have said, Christian, Diego, Gloria, Grayson, and Susan. Um I believe that the B O C C should pass this letter and support our community members. I also, for my fellow community members in this meeting, would like to dispel one myth. Um all of the resources the B O C C is referring to um undocumented immigrants using um such as federal, our federal programs that the federal government currently allows their participation and it is not participation um in locally funded programs. Um Medicaid allows this participation for youth and in cases of emergency, uh SNAP allows this participate, participation and LEAP. And these are all programs that bring dollars to our community to support us. Um so thank you all so much.
Thank you. Um I'm not, oh, okay, uh see uh TNT. And again, uh you need to say your name and address in Lake County for the record. But TNT, please unmute and make your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
T N, or Tina, Kansas, six eighteen West A Street, Leadville.
Tina, you are a little faint, I don't know if you can get closer to the mic or.
Can you hear me now?
Little better, it's pretty, pretty faint.
Speak loud.
Yeah.
Well, if you can hear me, it's like going back, looking through the records of all the public meetings. Got these nonprofits coming in and they're in there asking for money from our taxes. And I recall one meeting where there was a city council and Emily Olson stating that this program that they offered was only made available to your non-speaking Spanish people and how they live in bad conditions versus us. So to sit there and say that this money is not coming out of our tax dollars is wrong.
Thank you. Um I thought there was some more.
It was best ever, Mike was me.
Mike Olson, okay, thank you, uh Mike Olson.
Hey, uh yeah, my name is Mike Olson, I live at three oh nine West Eighth. Um I support this designation because it protects our neighbors from unfair targeting by federal policies. Being undocumented, as a lot of people have already said, is not a crime, it's a civil issue. And this status simply ensures that local institutions focus on uh community concerns, not deportation efforts. Um sanctuary status doesn't invite crime or new populations, that's a fact. It's about supporting hardworking residents and protecting the dignity of everyone who lives in Leadville. Um so I hope this council adopts it, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mike. I see Carly Salo with a hand up.
Hey, everyone, Carly Sailor, three oh one East Force, Leadville. Um I just want to um acknowledge the commissioners, this is a really hard situation for y'all and like Grayson said, no one is happy. Um I do appreciate the thought that's gone into this letter and just want to like reiterate that my understanding based on what I'm reading is that this is not a designation. It's not a sanctuary county designation, it doesn't look like a sanctuary city or a welcoming county ordinance or resolution. And I think that's what y'all stated at the top, this isn't those, if my understanding is correct. And I think that keeps being brought up. Um so for many of us who are interested in protecting and supporting our immigrant community, this is not strong enough and I recognize that the, there is urgency there. Some folks are requesting that y'all wait until the next B O C C comes in and the next B O C C will also have an opportunity to hear this question. Like you said, this is an evolving topic and we have a lot of uncertainty as to what is going to happen in the new year and under the new administration. And um with that in mind, I appreciate that you're taking some step to acknowledge the issue and to make a statement of welcoming and inclusion for our immigrant community, um even though you are choosing to not make a sanctuary city designation. I think that, like many folks have stated, um there are a lot of immigrants in our community who are on the path to citizenship. And I think something that we can all agree on, folks in this room and online, like the immigration system is broken. And that's a federal question that the county doesn't have a lot of control over. Folks have been um going through legal channels for years and years and years and not receiving the um status that they're seeking. And so in the meantime, something like sanctuary status or even this letter that you're putting out does provide um at least a statement of belonging and inclusion and support for our neighbors who are immigrants and I do appreciate that. Um yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I see one other hand raised and then we're gonna take a a break, public comment. We have, um yeah, we just want to have a chance to absorb this and discuss uh what our next steps are. Uh so I think, sorry, I think I saw Amanda Fitzpatrick, oh, sorry, they're um, well, uh take, take Amanda Fitzpatrick, please.
Hi, my name is Amanda Fitzpatrick and I live at four twenty West Seventh. And I just want to echo what has been said um by Carly. This letter is not making a sanctuary status and I understand that there are a lot of moving pieces and a lot of nuance in this issue. But I really encourage our uh government, whether it's this current B O C C or the next one, to take a stronger stance to protect our neighbors and our community members. These are people who have been part of our community for years and um they deserve a chance to be able to continue living here. They support our local businesses, our nonprofits, pay taxes. Um a lot of this challenging nuances is coming from the federal level, as Carly said, but what we can do as a local community is establish sanctuary status to protect our fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And um I apologize, uh sorry, just quick, yes, uh we are seeing the comments in the chat. Um so we, you know, we are seeing those and um they'll be part of the input we receive. So folks who are entering uh in the chat, uh you are being, you are being seen and heard. Uh I want to take a quick break, I fortunately have, Commissioner Edwards has a hard stop uh at twelve fifteen, so I want to give us a chance to discuss uh this further and give guidance to staff on whether I I think guidance could be on any changes we want to make at this point in the letter and then also just clear guidance on staff on how to distribute this and, yeah, and other guidance that staff needs.
But now I just, I do also acknowledge that I have uh emails from community members that wanted their public comment right into the record.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I, okay. Uh we will get there, but again, just sort of with the unfortunate scheduling hard stop, just want to have us a chance to, um while we're all here, a chance to reflect on anything. And again, I think for now, the guidance would be any changes that we still see, we would like to see in the letter or if not, just a um sort of sense of our guidance to staff on whether and how to distribute this. So I'll, I'll, I'll start off, I, I uh I appreciate all the input and, you know, there's obviously a very wide range of views on this and concerns. Um, you know, I still feel like this letter uh is a good first step at addressing, you know, an uncertain situation and uncertain future. I'm comfortable with the language in it. Again, as we said at the top, um I'm really grateful that it is a joint message to the community from the county and from county law enforcement. Um so that I, I mean, I'm comfortable with the letter as it was read by Hal at the top. Um and comfortable, you know, giving that guidance to distribute it as, as is under our four signatures, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with it too. I, I think the big, for me, the big, I think the big question, the big uncertainty of, you know, amongst the immigrant community is, is what's the position of the sheriff? And to what extent is sheriff going to cooperate with, with federal uh immigration enforcement? And this letter uh explains that, and I think it's a good thing. It also mentions the, some of, you know, the state statutes of laws that affect this issue too. Um so yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with this. Uh if depending on how things play out, the next, the next board may choose to do something different, which is fine, they can do that. Um but this is a good first step. And there, there is no advocacy for making this a sanctuary county. Uh and again, like I said earlier, the city, I don't know what the city's gonna do. The city is a completely separate organization from us. Um they have their own leadership team and again, I don't know what they're gonna do. But this is just to explain the county's position on, on this and the sheriff in particular. And that's really it. There's no encouragement of people coming here. Um there's a lot of misinformation out there about what, what the county funds, what the county doesn't fund, what the feds fund and what the feds don't. And I would encourage people to do more research on that because there's um there, again, there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
I'd like to just comment, the, I think the fifth paragraph, paragraph in the letter says, instead of pursuing a sanctuary designation, um and then goes on to show our support. Um I wonder if, I mean, I think that makes it clear that we're not making a designation. Um but I do wonder if we want to add a little bit of language that then recognizes how hard it is to meet our existence. um, that then recognizes how hard it is to meet our existing community members' needs? And, um, um, that we aren't in a position to, uh, see an influx of people? Because I don't think we think that will happen. And I, and I think we all agree that we have a string of resources. Um, so maybe just some language, uh, eh, perhaps in that paragraph, um, that explains, uh, our, our scarce or, or spread thin resources as they exist today. Um, but still encourage, I, I mean, I want, I think we all want to continue to send that stronger message out um, to encourage the support of our existing neighbors, our neighbors that are here, um, and our community members that are here, and the families that are here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, especially hearing some of the comment and concerns. I think that's a concern that we all shared in wrestling with this issue. So, and I'd, I'd support, you know, adding a s- a sentence in that, however, if there's a better place to put it, sort of acknowledging that resources are already stretched thin, and that's a concern. Something along those lines. I don't, we probably don't need to wordsmith in real time. We can ask staff to propose, you know, a sentence or phrase to that effect. Sheriff?
Yeah, um, actually, I'll address Laura's comment first. Um, because it is important to me to recognize that we are, we don't want conflicting laws. And it was, I'm, I'm glad you brought that federal law up about harboring and, uh, or aliens, as they're described in that statute. And, uh, Colorado statute doesn't go against that. That it is specific to holding, uh, from a detainer standpoint, um, is what that statute is. So it's not opposing federal law. Um, if there are, if there's federal law situations that come in here, let's say a federal court order, uh, that comes in, I trust the due process to the federal court system that will acknowledge that. And I also think it's important that I work with those federal agencies to make sure that they're not going beyond what the Constitution allows them to do also. And I think it's important to have my involvement in that so they're not violating any sort of seizure efforts. Um, I really appreciate the comment, too, about the letter, the Declaration of Independence. Appreciate you bringing that up, and I do, I do value that. And I also value the comments that were sent today, that although this is a letter, that it could speak, um, strongly. Um, and that's why, that I joined the conversation to make sure that there were not ordinances, there were not resolutions. However, I do also believe that communication is important. I believe it's important to be transparent. Um, and this is why I don't think that a vote is appropriate on a letter communication, that, that we're saying, this is our efforts to communicate. Here's what we do. Here's what we're gonna continue to do. And there are a lot of situations that are hard to predict. Um, so it, so it is hard to identify specific situations on how we're gonna handle those. Um, and I, so I do believe that this letter addresses that, those communication efforts. Um, I do believe the, the letter is not recreating or, or, uh, changing policy, um, but it's a communication effort. And we will continue to do things as we have them, where we're taking into consideration all aspects of every situation. It's complex. It is very hard to predict. And we'll continue to do that. Um, you guys have seen me working over the past two and a half years. Um, and the situations that I've had to deal with, I learn, I readjust, what I do is right. And I wanted to give you guys that look.
Great. Thanks, Steve. I really appreciate those, those comments. Um, so, and I think, I feel like I hear agreement. Um, you know, we had, uh, a, a, a good suggestion that was also agreement, but an agreement that will, um, you know, give guidance to staff to, and we'll take a look at that proposed additional sentence, um, or, or phrases, uh, and, um, and take steps to distribute the letter through good, good widespread analysis. Um, is that sort of agreement?
Yep.
Great. Um, okay. And thanks, yeah. We squeaked in under your deadline. Um, so I think with that, or we can take, I think there were one or two more hands. And then Tim, you said there were some, uh, requests to read letters into the record, which is appropriate? Uh, so... Um, do I see? I think we're, uh, I mean, we'll keep going. Okay, Max Cohen, you are next with a hand up online. Yeah.
Do you just wanna step in, Max?
Uh, I'm actually in the car. I left. I had to get lunch. Um, I just wanted to say real quick that I've heard a wide range of opinions today and over the last month. And regardless of the fact that there's a differing of opinions, it seems clear to me that everybody in this community, for their own reasons, are coming to the table from a place of compassion and love, and that they really do want the best for everybody that lives here. And, and I think that that's a really good sign, and this letter does seem to bridge that gap in an effective way. So I'd like to thank the commissioners for writing an in-between language and hope that we can adopt this with some language changes. And then see what happens in the future. And if we need to add more, we have that ability. And I think that that really does represent the goals of this community, which are generous, regardless of how they may be expressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I just see one more. Let's see, there's one more. Uh, so Wendy, uh, you have, the floor, please unmute.
Hi, this is Wendy. I live at, Wendy Weiss Gill. I live at three two two West Sixth. I actually what, liked what Mac said at the end, where it seems to bridge, um, bridge some things. This is, uh, something that might help us get to where we wanna go. But I also wanna say I support what Carly and Diego and Amanda and Susan said, among others, and Mike, um, in an effort not to repeat what they said. I will stop.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great. Appreciate that. Um, Tim, you said you had, so are you, are you okay reading those out?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
So I just wanna acknowledge I did have one from Tina Tecanter. She already made a public comment, so just plugging that.
Could I ask how lengthy it is?
No, this is not Tina's.
Oh, 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 sorry. Yeah.
Uh, her comments kind of like agree now.
Okay.
I gotta do that. Um, this one is from Jane Horning. Dear Sarah, Jeff, and Hal, this letter is to state my opposition to Lake County becoming a sanctuary city. Please both know, this is not something good for our community, especially our Hispanic neighbors currently living in Lake County. This is not something we want. We do not need the attention this decision would bring to our community. Why start it? Reasons for not becoming a sanctuary city. Number one, crime. To say that undocumented individuals who have illegally entered the USA do not elevate crime in sanctuary cities is an absolute lie. Yes, they do. A simple internet search quickly proves that indeed, crime is risen dramatically in the city of Denver alone. Before voting, go to www.citidata.com/city/denvercolorado.html. In two categories alone, the following statistics. State year two thousand nine, thirty-five murders. Year two thousand two, ninety murders. Year two thousand nine, twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-six thefts. Year two thousand two, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four thefts. Double. In every category, it is noted value is much bigger than the state average. You have family in Lake County. I have family in Lake County. Will this decision come, cause harm to any one of our loved ones? Can we afford more police? Sanctuary cities do have increased time. Number two, how would our county raise the funds needed to care for the increase in migrants? Raise taxes more? How can our little hospital afford to offer free or reduced care? Where would these folks live, work? You really need to answer these questions before committing our community to this decision. Yes, you do. Thank you for reading my letter. I hope to hear your response to my two concerns. Vote no. Sincerely, Jane. Um, the other one is, um, from an anonymous person. So defer to the board on how you want to do that, since everyone else who showed up today stated who they were.
I think anonymous, we are not taking in public will. I mean...
Yeah, I agree.
Individuals can choose to look at it if they choose. Uh, okay. Um, thank you, everyone, for taking time out of your day, uh, to think about this and give us your input. Uh, as we said, this is the beginning of a response to uncertain changes in this area. So, you know, please keep, uh, you know, please keep paying attention and, you know, give us input, give the future P O C C input and support for the difficult choices they're gonna make. And again, thank you for everyone taking, taking their time. And thank you to commissioners and sheriff and all staff who worked on this. Um, I guess I just quickly just wanna make sure that the staff feel like they have clear, uh, direction from us, guidance from us.
Yes, we will add a sentence around Lake County's limited resources.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I will take a, a few-minute break, four-minute break, five-minute break. I just, uh, let everyone, uh, exit, and we've been reconvened. We'll pick up with the animal shelter agenda item. Okay, folks in the room, folks online, we're gonna pick up again with the moved agenda item regarding the animal shelter and next steps forward on that. So let me start off, I assume there are probably some people here who wanna make public comment, but we're just gonna give a little background on some of the possible steps we might take or need to take or might take today. So I guess just for a very deep background, I mean, so the current animal shelter, you know, in this community is a joint undertaking by the city of Leadville and the county under an existing IGA or intergovernmental agreement. In March of this year, the county, the BOCC, sent a letter to the city, which among other things expressed or gave notice of intent to terminate that IGA January 1st of 2025, which is coming up really soon. So I think first thing to note is that letter is still in effect. That notice of intent to terminate, January 1st, is still in effect. So I think we need to make a decision, give guidance to staff on how we want.
Do you wanna talk about the background of why the county did that letter?
Think I'll get to that. Wanted to stay high level before descending into layers of detail. But for sure, I mean, maybe there were reasons given in that letter. There have been other, you know, opinions expressed about concerns or issues we have with the budget and management of the animal shelter and reasons for why we feel it's appropriate to have issued that notice of intent to terminate. The second issue of background is that there was a recent letter, I think the end of last week, from the city of Leadville. I think in my view, it made several inaccurate statements and mischaracterized the county's position. So I think we need to discuss a sort of response to that letter. I mean, a response was requested, so from, by the city. Third, the city has not, to my knowledge, responded to our sort of spec sheet, if you will, elements of a new revised animal shelter IGA. We had a work session in September. We, the BOCC, had a work session in September. We laid out several sort of, I mean, page and a half of bullet points about what we would like to see in a revised IGA. And we have not seen a response from the city on that yet. So just a few, you know, pieces of background. So I just wanted to start off our discussion by laying out, you know, what I see as two or three options for us at this point. So I think, you know, again, I said, we have that notice of intent to terminate, January 1st. The current IGA that we are still under is, to my reading, very, very clear that it has to be January 1st, or you have to wait until the next year. It's not January 1st or some other date. So I think with that, we need to, well, sorry, so with that, we need to be clear. Are we going to exercise, you know, that intent and terminate the IGA? So I think sort of option one, pathway one, is to go ahead and terminate the IGA and assume operation January 1st, 2025. I think it is, you know, that comes with a slew of logistical, operational issues. Well, we've been discussing, we had a work session, sorry, I didn't write down the date of when that discussion was, actually, I guess it was an agenda item in a regular meeting, when we had a good lengthy discussion on, you know, the issues we'd have to take care of. But, you know, we need to have our ducks in a row to assume operation January 1st. It's also possible if we terminate January 1st, we could ask the city for an, you know, negotiate or ask with the, you know, the city for an interim period, say, the first quarter of 2025, to jointly arrange an orderly transition. There's no clear provision for that in the current IGA, but we could in good faith, you know, request that or negotiate that with the city. So I think that's sort of the first pathway, is exercising that intent to terminate of January 1st, 2025. I think a second pathway is to, you know, if we feel that that pathway has too many uncertainties, you know, for whatever reason, we can get into the discussion of what that first pathway looks like. We could withdraw this year's letter, but then, you know, I don't think there's any time constraint on it, but we could, you know, send a notice of intent to terminate January 1st, 2026, and take that year, you know, to, you know, clearly express in that letter that 2025 is a planning year for that termination. And, you know, we can discuss how clear and definitive we do or don't wanna be on that. I mean, the letter from March, you know, clearly extended the opportunity to renegotiate the IGA. We haven't been able to complete that this year. We could, we could offer that again, you know, that 2025 is a year to keep renegotiating the IGA, or we could be more definitive that, no, we are going to terminate January 1st, 2026. So I think that's sort of a second pathway is basically, unfortunately, under the current IGA, we can't say June 1st, like, it's very clear that termination has to occur on January 1st, which means we're taking another year in the current situation. But again, we can be clear on that intent to terminate and have it be a planning year. And then, just to say it, I mean, there is the option to just withdraw the notice to terminate and continue with the negotiations on a revised IGA and sort of take termination off the table for now. We'd have, up until the end of March of 2025, I think under the current IGA, notice has to be given by the end of March, I believe.
On April 1st.
Oh, April 1st. A couple minutes distinction there. You know, so we can, you know, we, to, we could simply withdraw the letter and not, you know, leave it essentially to the future BOCC about whether they wish to restate that notice and intend to terminate. So sorry, that was a lot of mouthfuls, but I think those are sort of the three pathways that I see, given the situation we've kind of been backed into here by not being able to revise the IGA and just to say it frankly, sort of deteriorating relationships with the city around this issue. So again.
May suggest a fourth option would be to ask the city for an amendment to the current IGA to extend it for the first quarter.
Yeah. If I could, I sort of see that as a mechanism to achieve that first pathway of like being clearly on a path, well, yeah, okay, I see your point, yeah. I think, but I think that would, if I'm hearing, if I'm understanding, that pathway, that for sure requires the agreement, you know, the cooperation of the city in, you know, making that amendment to the IGA, so that.
I'm not sure why they would be opposed to having another opportunity to extend negotiations that have been taken place.
I can, I can think of, I can think of reasons. Again, I mean, just without belaboring it, you know, I think we've have a. Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll take public comment on this agenda item for sure, so hold tight. So Sheriff, thanks for taking more of your day with our business. And so I don't know if I can state my preference of a pathway or if wanna sort of, yeah, add other pathways or ask questions or get into a discussion. I'm very open to sort of doing that, but I think, I think this is really the moment to like pick one of those pathways. I mean, we, I mean, we can punt it for another special meeting, but I think time is of the essence.
Yeah, I think the first quarter to make appropriate plans with a focused effort is pretty necessary to not cause chaos. If we don't have time to figure out a pathway, it's gonna be quite the challenge to come up with solutions. Do you feel like a transition to county is the best option, given that this is a shelter that both serves county and city? And to have an animal shelter that is ran by the county who serve both sides seems to be appropriate to me. But that needs time. I think that there has to be some sort of pressure for that time to be a priority. Focused on the animal shelter is not something too thrilled about that, you know, three quarters of the year later, we haven't come up with an IGA that we both agree with. I just think that it was not prioritized. I can understand why there's a lot of big ticket items to work through, but we have to change that mentality and focus on a quarter one to come up with some solutions.
So if I could, let me try to restate that and see if I got it, got it right. I mean, what I'm hearing is assuming full operational control, like, terminating the IGA and assuming full operational control by the county feels hectic, for lack of a better word, like.
Or immediate turnaround, absolutely.
A little daunting to really have that happen January 1st. So, but definitely wanting to get on a pathway towards county being the administering entity. So taking that step of asking for, you know, the city's, you know, whatever the exact mechanism is, you know, that first quarter, you know, handover period. And I could see, I don't think you got into this detail, but that could be finalizing the revised IGA, but with the county as the operating entity, but still a shared IGA, or it could be, you know, following through with termination. I mean, I think there's gonna need to be some, I mean, there'd be some agreement between the two entities. You know, so did I kind of capture that?
That's great.
Okay.
I, I mean, I agree with that. I think that using the option, I mean, I think we probably want to rescind the termination and issue another notice so that the pressure remains to actually have the conversations and maybe in the letter, we can set forth the expectation of the timeframe of, you know, the next six months as an ideal timeframe.
Yeah.
I know the response, the city's response said that an IGA or some marked version from them was forthcoming. Did we see that yet?
I have to admit, I didn't, I mean, I certainly haven't checked since our meeting started, but I did not see that as of the end of yesterday.
Okay. So I think hopefully with that, these conversations of, you know, I do think it would be best if the county was operating that in a county-owned facility with the stability of the sheriff's office and the depth of administration that we do have. So I would, I would support that path.
Good, yeah, I think those are, those sound consistent. I'm very good with that pathway. So, you know, rescinding the notice, but then communicating clearly, you know, our desired path forward, you know, maybe with a couple options, you know, to the city and expressing that need to work on the exact, you know, language in the letter, but, you know, our communication to the city, but clearly the, you know, before April 1st is like a pretty stark milestone where we need to see some progress that's satisfactory to us, or, you know, the, well, this BOCC won't be here, but our intent would be to reissue that termination. I will say, I mean, from my position, I agree with all that. I, I am, I may, maybe while I'm still in office, it would be great if we could hear some responses from the city to the communication we give to them. I would be willing to reissue the intent to terminate, you know, while I'm still in office. I think, yeah, just to keep that clear option open for the county. I think, you know, letting that expire and also, you know, handing off that difficult decision to a brand-new BOCC that doesn't have the history on this issue. You know, I'm willing to take that hit and not leave that difficult decision for the incoming BOCC in their first few weeks. But again, I think that's pretty consistent and we don't have to make that decision today. Okay, I'll say, I don't wanna speak for Commissioner Edwards, but I, I think from conversations we've had, joint, you know, we had that joint work session, I think that is, you know, within, you know, the range of sort of full consensus views of the OCC. Again, don't wanna speak for someone who's not here, but I, I'll just say I don't, I don't have concerns that we are, have a very strong dissenting voice to that path forward. So I think maybe I'd ask staff if this seemed clear in terms of the sheriff and the BOCC's sort of desire for how to move forward in the next, I mean, let's say, week, you know, or so, in terms of getting a communication drafted up back to the city on this path forward.
So you want to rescind the March notice of termination, reissue a notice of termination?
I think, I think maybe, I think we could hold off on that second one, but I think for sure rescind the current one, given the sense that we're not quite ready, you know, to assume full operational control, January 1st. I think we can maybe play with some language or have, I mean, I, I, I think where I came down on is, I'd like to try to see if we can get a discussion going with the city or hear a response from the city on what comes out of this meeting and our communication to them before, like, writing for sure that new intent to terminate.
I understand that, but in the city's letter, it made pretty clear that they don't wanna deal with you, so.
I mean, then if that is the course they continue to take, yes. I mean, like, paragraph six of their letter said, you know, given that a new BOCC is coming in, they would like to deal with a new BOCC instead of us. That is not their choice. We aren't the current commissioners, so if they want to not respond to our communication to them, then we can deal with that situation if they, you know. So I think we can just see how they really intend to play that out. But I, for sure, point taken, Tim.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I guess I appreciate where you're going with that, but I also don't see the harm in kind of reissuing, just reissuing that notice with some nuanced change language. I mean, in the letter that the city sent to us, they asked if we, or the board, whichever board would participate, oh, no. I guess it would be the next board in a February workshop. I don't know if that's a work session. I mean, I would be pretty explicit in our language in the, in communication to them to say, like, look, we need a work session that is actually, like, going to be productive and not going to allow hours of public comment, like, that is not the purpose. We understand how the public feel about this and we also understand that there are a lot of details that are not understood by the public that we need to iron out, so we need to have a meaningful work session and conversation across the city and the county. So that'd be one thing I would add kind of to that of kind of laying ground rules or expectations for those conversations.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, yeah, so the suggested time from the city's letter was February 11th. I think, you know, we'd clearly like to have some discussion before then. I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with just going ahead and, you know, issuing it. I don't, it doesn't bind us or the future of the OCC, it's a notice of intent, it's not a, you know.
A little awkward. While I respect the city's request of February 11th, that is up.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I would flag that for them, certainly.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, likewise, I'm not gonna accept that on behalf of other elected officials. So, yeah. I mean, Heath, I invite you to weigh in, I mean, do you have any concern with the count, with the BOCC going ahead at this point? And sort of, I don't know if reissuing is the right word, but, you know, stating the, you know, as we did in March of this year, going ahead and stating that notice of intent to terminate for January 1st, 2026, just to sort of keep that clear pressure on.
So that buys the most time of the march to work through. It continues on again, so again, we have three quarters of the year to work through that and it wasn't done, so my concern is that 2025 looks like 2024 did in many ways. I think if we also, it's, question is, if we rescind the letter now, does that, we would have, essentially have to wait until next year to reissue that because it had to be done by April 1st.
I, I mean, I was gonna actually ask that, you know, maybe before, before we communicate anything formally to the city, I think we probably need to double-check the IGA and make sure that the notice of intent, like, does it say that it has to happen in that year? Or I don't remember it saying.
Any notice of intent to terminate the IGA has to be given by April 1st of the year for it to be effective January 1st of the following.
But it isn't, I mean, to Heath's question, it doesn't have to happen in 2025.
In terms of what, the notice?
Like, it could happen, it could happen now in December for 2025.
Yeah, the intent has to be given by April 1st of the year for it to be effective.
Just might be worth checking to make sure there's not some weird phrasing in there that like the, sorry, that, that it, that if, if the IGA renews in 2025, that we don't have to give intent to terminate that renewal. You know, just like, I could, I could imagine that there's some weird sentences in the IGA. I just wanna make sure that we don't have to wait until January 1st. I just wanna make sure that we don't have to wait until January one to indicate that termination for January one, twenty twenty-six.
No, it's
You, 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 okay.
I'm confident if it just says that the intent to terminate has to be given by April first.
Okay. Okay, then, yeah, um, just overthinking things.
I guess to my, with with that topic is if we're just looking to a amend the I G A through quarter one of twenty twenty-five, does rescinding that now prevent us from doing that?
I I I mean, I feel like we have to rescind, right? Be, so, so.
I don't think you have to rescind. I think you can ask the city to agree to an amendment to the I G A. And if they agree to that amendment to the I G A, then you'd be willing to rescind the current termination notice because you would be extending the I G A through the first quarter.
Okay, but I think we would, we would need a response before January one.
Either, exactly.
So we can lay out those two pathways as as options. But I think, yeah, just to be, I mean, my clear understanding is like we, we, we have to rescind by January one or 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 take over in January one.
Well, it just means the I G A terminates.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether that means that the county takes over at that point or continues to negotiate with the city with the, you know, to be determined.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I think we can, yeah, we can ask staff to draft up a letter that with those, with, with, I mean, with that pathway, but some of the options expressed, and we can review it.
Is, are we rescinding or not rescinding?
I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable, well, well, I think, i- if I heard, I think one of the pathways that we could state in the communication, you know, letter to the city is
We first want an agreement to re- renew the I G A, re- amend the I G A, and we would agree to rescind the letter.
We. Yeah. Yeah.
Isn't that seem like a clear path between that or rescinding it and renewing one that is in effect through twenty twenty-five?
I mean, they sort of accomplish the same thing. It, well, I th- I mean, I guess there, the, like, putting both pathways in the letter keeps open the possibility of having things resolved by the end of the first quarter. And and the county taking operational controls sooner than January one, twenty twenty-six. It like still keeps that window open if the city is amenable to that amendment or whatever the right word is to the current I G A. Cause if we don't, I mean, if we close, close windows, close doors, we, i- i- if you close off that pathway definitively, then the only remaining option is January one, twenty twenty-six.
I pulled up the I G A if you'd like to hear the exact language of the termination.
Yeah, sure, see, I didn't do that.
So it essentially says that a department may terminate this agreement by giving written notice of said termination nearly later than April one of any given year in order to affect termination on the first day of January succeeding.
Yeah.
Maybe I'd just be making assumptions that it would take longer than we hope, and why not cut to the chase?
Always amended, I guess.
Yeah.
Beauty of contract, you can always do a number of that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't pin a ton of hope on that, but I think, you know, it's worth, I, to me, I think it's worth, it makes the letter a little more complicated, but I think it's worth keeping that option open in the hope that we could get this resolved, you know, rather than taking a whole year.
But if we, if we, hmm, if we offer to rescind that with an agreement to negotiate the I G A, which I think that really the city's been kind of in that agreement, eh, at least verbally, right, in good faith, I don't think we've seen anything.
Yeah.
Um, we rescind it, there is no, I think there's no remaining pressure throughout the year to get that taken care of throughout twenty twenty-five, maybe. And then by April, we'll still have to renew or put them on notice without any, if should there not be any progress made, so I'm kind of feeling like we rescind and we issue a new notice with some expectations of the timeline through twenty twenty-five. I actually think that gives us maybe a stronger position.
Can you say that again? So.
Rescinding our current notice of termination because taking over January one is a bit hectic and maybe we are ill-prepared to do that.
Yeah, so.
Um, but I think we.
So clearly rescind, but a new notice of intent to terminate, um, uh, unless by the end of March, uh, you know, before April one, a new finalized I G A with the county as the operating entity is achieved.
I think so. I mean, I I don't know that April one is important other than just kind of setting expectations for quarterly progress.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, because we've already, we would have already issued, we've, we've intend, if we already, if we intend to issue a new notice. Um, but I think it would be, I think it would be great to by April, by the first, the end of first quarter, to be in some of, some of what, of an agreement of what the operation, operational structure will look like um, between the city and the county, and then details of the I G A could be ironed out through the second quarter. And, um, I guess transition might happen in the last half of the year.
Yeah, and I guess, and I guess back in terms of of like trying to keep open a pathway where it could happen faster, there's nothing stopping the new revised I G A going into effect sooner. I mean, the, the
Sure.
the I G A can be mutually terminated, right? You know, so, uh, with with a revision, so, okay, so
Mm-hmm.
that sounds a little simpler, to put it that way. Um, okay, yeah, cause I just, I mean, I think waiting on another year just sort of felt defeating, uh, or frustrating, um.
For clarity, just in terms of, so are you asking for the amendment to the I G A or not?
Yeah.
Just so I know what staff needs to do for y'all. To the current I G A, to give that more time.
Hmm, yes, I think we are asking to pursue that, but I think we are, you know, in in contrast to the March letter, we are asking to state more clearly that the revised I G A would have the county as the operating entity. So I think that's one change, and I think, at least for me, you know, we, we, we don't need to load up this letter with other elements we've communicated in the elements from our work session, you know, what are, um, what our preferred, you know, elements of a, of a revised I G A are. But I think, yes, to answer your question, Chris, it's like we want that, um, that new revised I G A to be negotiated and finalized. Um, I mean, and and I'll just say, I mean, to be clear, I think that's vastly preferable just for sort of operational certainty than termination without clear, you know, I G As or other amendments in place. Just, I mean, yeah. Um, um. Sarah, are you okay giving Lori, city?
Sure.
Uh, Laurie, are you still online? I see your, your, your hand was up. Um, thank you for your patience in giving us the chance to discuss this here. I'm happy to give you, uh, the the floor for public comment.
All right, thank you. Uh, I would just like to say thank you to the commissioners for, um, doing what we asked, which is to take a pause and a breath on this situation and, uh, continue the negotiations on the I G A. That is the preferred outcome of the city. Um, I think that I speak on behalf of the mayor as well, that we, uh, were disappointed when we heard that the county intended to take over the animal shelter because what we really wanted was to continue the partnership and the negotiations with the county. So, uh, we appreciate you doing that and taking a breath, and, uh, we would not have any objection to, uh, amended uh, I G A, amendment to the I G A extending that date. In fact, um, I had just proposed that in the chat moments before it was proposed by your county attorney, so I think we were thinking on the same page. Um, I do, uh, wanna let you all know that we do have, uh, of, uh, I G As that mayor indicated uh, that is in its final revisions, um, right now, the, and she indicated we would get that to you shortly. So that is very close to being able to get to you, and, um, we, we look forward to working in a partnership with this. Uh, and I, I think that the ultimate goal for everybody is that the care and the treatment of the animals is the first priority. And that we really need to think about that and the outcome of any potential options, whether it's uh, uh, the nuclear option or a partnership option, I think we really need to focus on the fact that the the community wants a a well-running animal shelter, and I think that's everyone's goal. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, uh, uh, thank you, Laurie. I really appreciate that constructive way of framing things, and, you know, I I know we've had disagreements on this. Um, so, uh, honestly appreciate, uh, your being here and and giving that comment, so I think that we have a path, path forward. Um, yeah, and I definitely look forward, I think it'd be really helpful for us to see that response to the I G A elements or or sound like maybe even like some drafting has has happened on your side, it'd be really good for us to know where there are red lines or, you know, major areas of disagreement. So very much looking forward to to that. Um, so thanks for the work on the city's side on that. Any, I s- should I, I think we know where we're headed?
I think so. I mean, re- revising that, uh, notice of intent to terminate, maybe to include some clearer expectations with like Q one conversations, Q two, and a run out through the year, um,
Yeah.
as best we can outline and hope for. Um, and I'd be happy to, like, put that on our last meeting, January seventh.
Yeah, yeah, great. Um, yeah, thanks. Uh, so I think, uh, Laurie, I appreciate, I I I think just, you know, we've already two hours into a long agenda meeting, so I think in the interest of of efficiency, I I I think we have a path forward and we can, you know, work on this collaboratively, you know, um, off offline with each other.
Uh, I think we maybe want to take some level of vote right now on, uh, rescinding the uh, current notice to terminate and, um, take appropriations on January.
I guess something to just perhaps giving guidance for us to draft then, and then taking the forming vote either on the thirtieth or the seventh
Yeah.
would be my recommendation.
Or it has to be the thirtieth.
In terms of what your next step, the the seventh could be pretty imminent, so
Yeah, but.
the end of the month, suggesting that would give staff the opportunity to work with the city to get that amendment drafted and to be able to bring it to you on the thirtieth, in terms, so that that would
The amendment of the I G A?
Or to extend the term for the first quarter, so that you rescinding the termination on the basis that we're amending the I G As as, um, the administrator, Simonson, agreed to, uh, to extend it for the first quarter so we can work out what the the transition, the the new elements of the I G A, so we have that opportunity more time to work on the natural. So we're turn, not terminating, but amending it to extend its term past January first to the first quarter. That was what I heard, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I think that, I think that makes sense, because I think in this discussion, we've given some pretty clear discussions and guidance on where we're headed, so
Mm-hmm.
but I think to actually vote on that or reach consensus on what that letter or about, you know, amendment
Okay.
and which looks like, I I think, but but again, like, I think it has to happen on the thirtieth, um, for sure.
Sweet.
Um, if we can, if we can get it faster, we could do a quick special meeting, so.
I I'd like to be a very simple amendment, just extending the term through March thirty-first. For the national.
I don't know, and maybe it sticks in one half dozen or the other, like, cause I was proposing the rescinding and then giving another notice that would not, that would extend or that would cover the entirety of next year, not just the first quarter.
Sure.
But if we are, if that is the request of the city to extend it to the quarter, happy to.
Well, and I think, what makes it does is give flexibility. If we amend it for the first quarter, if we're not making progress on the I G A, then you have till April first to get news, it shouldn't have to be so premature and giving news termination if in fact we're
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
for the I G A.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we can see on the thirtieth or before, you know, upper level with how that extension is looking.
All right.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Okay, um,
Thank you.
Uh, I guess with that, the the city did request a response to their letter. Um, I am torn about responding to some things I disagreed with in that letter. Um, which I feel the need to address versus acting in good faith and not further pouring gasoline on a fire. Um, I know, Sarah, you, you, I mean, you looked at the letter, any, I mean, maybe we can work on a response just clarifying some elements, but given that we're trying to work cooperatively, I'll I'll tone that down.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, we can just clarify some things and definitely note, um, some things that are highlighted and brought to, um, in our, just in the discussions that hopefully we have them through the first quarter.
Yeah, okay. Um, I can, I can work on that and provide it by everyone, for sure. Um, I started, I had started some responses, but wasn't a calming exercise. Uh, um, I do, um, we didn't take public comment at the beginning of the meeting on this. I see Max Cohen has a hand raised. I don't know if it's on this topic, and, uh, just very briefly, welcome any public comment from folks in in the room or online. Um, Max, was your hand up for this issue?
Yes.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of the community meeting, since the county has, um, not shown up to any of those, uh, despite requests, that the community is very much behind the current shelter situation. Also, we do have a quora into the city, uh, that is pending imminently, and that will show the breadth of communication between, or lack thereof, between the county and the city as well as many other internal documents, so that the community will have full transparency and be able to see all of what is and is not real. I'd also like to point out a fact that's happening currently, where the city attorney, the county, excuse me, the county attorney on record has declared a compromise on this, yet is actively giving legal advice now despite being the president of the pet hood and publicly expressed her desire to fire the current count, um, animal shelter manager. We have that recorded. So that's all I have to say on that, other than the current manager and staff perform heroic feats for our animals and our communities, such as taking care of severely injured animals without question on our dime, and doing things like when a wolf shows up in our community in the middle of the night, driving all over the state of Colorado to make sure that that animal got the care that it deserved. And I believe that's above and beyond and something that we should admire for service to our community. Thank you and have a good day.
Hey, Max, just while you're still on, I I'd like, I have not heard or seen, uh, that, uh, recording or statement from the county attorney. I'd love to reach out or, I mean, just hear from you personally. I would love to to see that. That is not my understanding um, at all of what has been, uh, stated by staff, so I wanna just say for the record here, you know, again, clearly that is not what I have heard from county staff that you mentioned. Uh, I would love to hear, see any recording or written statement that you can share that backs up what you just said. I don't mean that in a confrontational way. I honestly would love.
I'll post all, all the evidence and information for everyone to read and come to their own conclusions and opinions on, on what the material shows and doesn't show.
Could, could, could you send? Could, could, could you send that to me as the V O C C chair, uh, posting, I mean, you're welcome to post it too, uh, but I'd love to just get that directly.
It, as far as I'm concerned, it's public information and you may be a commissioner, but it's part of the public too.
No, that's not what I said. I said, you're, I mean, of course, you're welcome to post it wherever and however you want. I was just.
No, no.
Requesting that you could save me the time of hunting down where you posted and just send it to me directly.
And I will, I will happily do that. And I also just wanted to extend that favor to anybody else who wanted to reach out and get a one-on-one email of all the information that I got.
Great, of course. Thank you. Uh, V Rodriguez, you have your hand raised?
Yes, um, so I'm a shelter staff member myself. Um, I would just like to mention that I would like for, you know, both parties, the city and the county to, you know, be um, really kind, um, when thinking about next steps. Because this is something that involves, you know, many living beings, not just staff members, but cats and dogs mainly is what my concern would be. Um, so, you know, I would like for future decisions and to all decisions to be coming from, um, you know, a point where things can go well, you know, I would not like for the shelter to uh, fall under the sheriff's department. I would like for it to continue under somebody who is educated about animals such as Caitlin. She, you know, she did work with the A S P C A. She continues her education and I would love, love for that animal education to continue for not just the shelter itself, but it also spreads through the community. And I think that is very, very essential. So I would highly, highly, um, suggest that, you know, those things are also brought, are brought into consideration moving forward with decisions. At the end of the day, I, I can give my opinion, but I don't make decisions sadly, but you know, I would like for it to be considered.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, a reminder for folks online to stay muted, please. Um, any, uh, should've started in the room. Anyone in the room wish to make a comment, please?
Jing Yaoing, three, two, three, Seventh Street. Um, I guess I would like to respond to, um, set the record straight.
Could, if you could please just address the board and not get into a direct back and forth with other members of the public.
If I could just go ahead and set the record straight. I, uh, I'm on the Plan to Pet Hood Leadville Board. Um, organization is twenty-six years old, one of the longer nonprofits in the county. Um, and I've probably been involved with P P L at least twenty of those twenty-six years. Um, and we've done some amazing work throughout the years. We're here to help animals. I don't like the politics. It's not about that. It's not about personalities. It's not about any of that. As Hella always reminded me, it's about the animals. We have donated, we have raised and donated thousands of dollars through the years. We get no reimbursement for the work that we do because we are passionate about helping the animals in this community. Our work has made a huge difference. When we came to town thirty-five years ago, we were frequently charged and attacked by unneutered, unspayed animals. Animals ran free. People just turned them loose because climates had shut down. And it was, it was not a good time for animals in Leadville. And I feel like due to Jeff Young, who is, uh, a veterinarian in the, formerly in the Denver area, now in Conifer Bailey area. Um, he and Hella Carpenter put together Plan Pet Hood Leadville and it's made a huge difference in the quality of life for our pets. That's what we are about. And I don't really wanna get involved with, and, and nor does our organization. We have enough to do to try and raise money. We have spent, and I don't have the numbers, but I could certainly get them if anybody has questions. We've had members of the community contact us to help when their dog has cancer, to help when their dog got hit by a car. And there was, they can't afford to have the work done. We have, we have donated when the shelter reached out back in twenty twenty-two, I believe, for money for a new washing, washer dryer, you know, and I have to say, I remember when I used to go to buy the shelter and Stephanie would be hanging laundry out in the middle of winter for, because we didn't have a dryer at the shelter and we were responsive to them. We donated eighteen hundred dollars towards a new, and I believe it was a washing machine. And, and so we are there to assist, fundraise and do, that's why we exist. Do what we can for our, our animals in this community. And as far as politics, I don't care. I don't, I don't care about people's egos. That's not what I'm about. And anybody that knows me and knows my work knows that I don't care. And even folks with the city know, when I was on council, that was one reason why I got involved. And I advocated for the animals in this community. And all I think anybody in this community wants to see is that work together and let's get going. We have so many, we have so many issues. And there's so much work to get done. We have, we need better training. And I, you know, forever for staff and organization. And that's all I think we're asking for. So, please, just roll up your sleeves and do the work.
Great, thank you. Uh, anyone else in the room wish to make public comment on the animal shelter? Seeing none, I see two hands raised online. Uh, J C H, could you state your name and address? And you have the floor.
Hi, this is Bill Cone Hall, eighteen forty-nine Silver Eagle Court in Lake County. Um, I'm sorry, I've been working. So I, some of these questions may have been answered. Um, but my first question for the V O C C is if the county takes over the shelter, will the shelter be similar to the style of shelter that we currently have? Or are we looking to go to an impound only facility or some other aspect of it? And then my second question is, I saw a really cool, um, transition of the fire department where there was a board created and you guys worked together, the city and the county. Is that an option for the animal shelter? I guess I was just surprised to hear that the county wanted to take it over fully. And I'm just not understanding fully why. And I think some of this information would help me as a citizen and other citizens of the community understand a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. I just say in, in public comment, we, we, we tend not to run it as a town hall and get back and forth. So I definitely take your questions on board and also take on board that we have not done a good enough job at the county communicating our, our position on that. So I think in our forthcoming communication, we'll, we'll do a better job of answering those questions. Uh, Brenda, Brenda, you have your hand up. You have the, you have the floor.
Hi, I apologize, everybody. Um, you're gonna hear some barking in the background. I am the office administrator for the Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter. Um, and so I'm just gonna give a little bit of my feedback on what's happened. Um, so I wanna thank everybody first for taking your time and the support for the animal shelter in our community, which serves both county and city as mentioned. Um, so as a Hispanic resident of Lake County for more than seventeen years now, I could say that there has been a lot of improvement regarding the animal shelter. Um, such improvement to the point of my community being welcomed in the animal shelter. Previously, there was racism, bias and under other management that I went through personally. And a lot of things where I used to be sent home, funding was just not what it was now. Um, nobody put anything in the air because, uh, I would be sent home when there was things to do at the shelter and animals to be cared for, but the director said, you can go home, it's slow. Um, so my budget was very, very low as a staff member and for me to care for my family, um, that was not convenient for me. Um, I, I was offered the job under new management and under Caitlin's care and it's changed a lot. My community has come back to the shelter. They've been donating, they've been adopting, they've been, um, fostering and caring for all these animals in, in Lake County. Um, it's not just the fact that I used to work under an alcoholic, um, that didn't care about me and now they do. Um, new management does not create problems for us. They advocate for us with, and that's my personal and staff view. Um, I can give the perspective of how I would be, um, the shelter would be run under law enforcement and personally, I would be concerned. Because I'm the only person I can state it here in Lake County that I know the perspective from law enforcement and from the shelter perspective. And how to merge those two together. And if it's just a power play, then, you know, I feel very, very sad about it because both of these worlds are not combining for the community and this is what they should be doing. Advocating for the animals that don't have a voice. We should, we are their welfare. We are their voice. And this is why we're here every single day. We volunteer, we take animals under our care and that's not gonna happen if it becomes an impound facility. There's been a lot of complaints that I've received while I was in law enforcement and while I was at the animal shelter regarding law enforcement. I've tried to educate the community and try to merge that with the police department. It has happened. And a lot of people have got resources and received them and their animals are under better care. I cannot say that about the sheriff's department. I have advocated a lot for them, but I have stopped. Because as a shelter employee, I cannot push for cases to be open. I'm a civilian again and I cannot push for people to go and advocate for their animals if law enforcement does not help them. It is their job. We do ours here at the shelter and we try and support law enforcement as much as we can, but we do not receive support. And that's very sad on our behalf because I know both worlds. I know that it is possible. Why are we not merging as a community to bring these two worlds together? Because this is what the community wants. It has spoken on multiple times on record. And if you need my community to speak up, please advocate for interpretation. That is why they are not attending to places. They are not being heard because these deputies do not speak Spanish. They are not calling people back. They are not opening cases. There are family members, four-legged family members that are being lost from families and being stolen and cases are not being opened. That's sad in our community. That is up here. We're worrying about other things, but if we cannot even care for a four-legged member that cannot advocate for themselves, then how are we gonna do other things? I see organizations help with us in and out. Plan Pet Hood has helped in the past, is not helping now. I've helped with other five oh one C threes and merged all kinds of organizations and people on record know me. And they can say who I am and what I do. I try to advocate and merge within our community because I've been involved with the schools, with law enforcement, with the animal shelter, with a lot of volunteer organizations within town. I'm very proud of what I have done and very proud of all of the circle that surrounds me.
Okay, thank you, Bren. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, uh, no, not seeing any other hands raised online or in the room to close public comment and I think close this agenda item if we're good. Um, feel compelled as chair just to say I apologize for folks who have in the course of public comment, uh, been criticized without an opportunity in this setting to respond to that. Uh, I am sorry for that. Uh, and people know who I'm, several people know who I'm talking about. Um, uh, so, but that unfortunately is just not the, the, the setting or the mode of discussion that we are in right now. So, uh, as chair, I apologize to people for that. Um, close that agenda item and maybe again, we could take like a two-minute break to, a three-minute break to reset, refill water and continue with our lengthy agenda. And I need to make a few. Okay, we can resume here at 1:31. Um, so I think, uh, it's already been a long time, but in trying to respect, uh, time will go ahead with, uh, with the license. Thank you. So, uh, we'll do discussion consideration of a two-year retail marijuana cultivation facility tier one license for J E M Dutch Acres LLC. Uh, so Liz, you have the floor for this.
Hi, so at our December 6 meeting, we asked you all to adopt a resolution to really solidify our process as well as our fee schedule for the one cultivation facility that we do have in the county. So at this meeting, we are asking for a renewal of their license. They are seeking a two-year license. Um, and other than that, they've done all of their steps with the state except for submit the final application. They have not paid the county fee because I was waiting to find out for the renewal term, so I know how much to charge them.
Okay.
Any reports or issues or anything like that? And I do, I do may need to open for public moment, please.
No, so the statute. So according to the pursuit of the statutes, you do not need to hold a public hearing.
We do not.
Um, so I did not do a public notice. I did not, um, create a mechanism to capture. This is really your discretion as a local licensing authority, how you like to perceive. However, if we would like to do that in the future, I'd be happy to let you read that stuff, but as of this time.
Okay.
It's not required, then, yeah. Um, and I guess, uh, just on that question of the two-year, that's within our.
Also, as your discretion as well, pursuant to the statute, you can approve a one-year or a two-year or seeking a two-year. Uh, because I think we ran them through some hula hoops this year.
Well, the state has adopted a two-year renewal policy now, so that's, uh, kind of where that's coming from.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Makes sense. So, great. Um, yeah, just wanted to make sure that wasn't a new thing we were creating as we tackled this.
No, we don't create, we follow. Except for in other areas, we definitely leave other counties because we're innovative.
Yes. Uh, okay.
All right, yeah, I have no problem. I'll move to approve the, um, retail marijuana cultivation, uh, facility tier one license for Gem Acres, Gem Dutch Acres LLC with a two, two-year term. That's it, sorry.
Yeah, uh, I'll, right, uh, I'll, I'll second, uh, and then just ask, make sure that was an adequate motion. Uh, great. And call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that, uh, tier one license for a two-year renewal for J E M Dutch Acres LLC is approved. Thanks, and.
And what would be the fee?
So it's going to be $2,000. So it's $1,000 per year. So I'm going to get that to sign this letter real quick and then we can write down the settlement.
Here is this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know what the service office is? Go get paid for $2,000. Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting today. Um, okay, so I think we can pick up with the Mile High Jeep Club?
Yes.
Okay, um.
You got it, you made it.
Marla gave the instructions.
Okay, fancy isle. Go ahead.
So the Mile High Jeep Club All For Fund 2025 is a historical event that we have had here in the county. So the setup is July 16th through 18th and the event itself is July 19th through 26th. They do have, um, five different sets of requirements for the special permit, um, including the applicant. That this event is pending or dependent on approval of special permit. Do they provide insurance? Do they have, um, permission from the Bureau of Management and Public Works and the U S Forest Service? And then if alcohol is provided, that they will do the additional insurance requirements. So it looks like they have done all of their steps. Marla says they're in good stead with her and she's enjoyed working with them in the past.
Great. Um, I don't have any further questions?
I do not, no. I'll move to approve the special event permit applications for the Mile High Jeep Club All For Fund for their 2025 event.
Great, I'll second. Um, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so that special event permit, again, for the Mile High Jeep Club All For Fund 2025 is approved. Um, okay, move on to, uh, public hearing for the discussion and consideration of adoption of Resolution 2024-41, a resolution of Lake County, Colorado approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado, and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal period beginning on the first day of January 2024 and ending on the last day of December 2024. Uh, Tim and, uh, the new finance director Candace Bryan's and I will, well, I'm off or listed, but I'm not sure who wants to lead off on this.
This is our third quarter.
Yeah.
Um, budget update for 2024. Um, so this has been publicly posted and noticed. Um, there are four items that were moving around. So one is the, uh, $100,000 that was for the Kennedy Justice Center Monroe Escrow account. So if you recall, the city of Leadville paid $100,000 for the new justice center site. Um, we had since changed gears, so we have refunded the city that money. Just need to reflect, um, that properly on our books.
Yep.
Um, the board is very generous in creating a scholarship, um, uh, in memory of our colleague Desiree, Desiree Padilla, uh, in amount of $30,000. Um, due to some, uh, health issues in the clerk and recorder's office, there was a need to increase the amount of the PSA with Teach Simonton, who was a Colorado elections expert, who assisted, uh, with our general election this year in the amount of $21,000. And then, um, for the preparation and design and construction of the coroner facility, the original bid we had with, um, shape architecture, we didn't include a survey for that area. Turns out we did need the survey, so the board did approve an additional amount to that award. Um, so that is the last, uh, last one. And if, then I think you can open it.
Okay, great. Thanks for that rundown of, yeah, just essentially the true up of sort of previously approved or appropriated monies. Thanks. Um, so yeah, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment. Uh, if anyone in the room or online wishes to make a comment on this agenda item, again, which is Resolution 2024-41, this is the moment. Seeing none in the room, giving people online a second. Seeing no request for public comment online, I will close the public comment period, um, for this agenda item, uh, Resolution 2024-41. Um, is there any further discussion we need or, um?
Jim, stretch, we.
I, I don't, again, I appreciate the rundown of the individual items and those all track for me on issues we've discussed. So I don't have any clarifying questions or concerns, uh, with the resolution. Um, so I'll look for a motion.
And 41 is correct?
Yes, thanks. I just, I just want to make sure. I didn't need to sound.
You do.
I do.
I, I'm pretty sure I closed public comment.
Yes, yes, I heard you.
But good to chat. Thank you.
All right, I'll move to approve, uh, Resolution 24-41, a resolution of Lake County, Colorado approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado, and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal period beginning on the first day of January 2024 and ending on the last day of December, of December 2024.
Yeah, um, I will second that motion.
Okay, nothing for me.
Good, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so Resolution 2024-41, uh, is approved. Uh, thank you. Um, we're actually just equipping, so you, you said that, that, that sort of gets us up to third quarter, right? Yeah.
Then on the 30th, your special meeting, we'll have Q4, the supplemental stream. That'll be basically the entire, anything we missed into the catch, but any Q4 changes as well.
Yeah. Okay. Um, sorry, I really pause. I have to take two minutes to deal with, um, a sick kid logistics. It will just take me very short. So I just, since we're down, we won't have more in a minute. So, um, we move on, we get, uh, discussion and consideration of Resolution 2024-46, a resolution establishing the county courthouse renovation fund.
Uh, sure, so, um, uh, the board has moved forward with the certificate of participation. These certificates were sold on Monday. So next Monday, the county should be, will be receiving, um, $8 million for the courthouse renovation. We also have, um, three and a half, well, $3,575,000 in congressionally directed spending and a $500,000 underfunded courts grant. Um, so in part to meet future debt obligations, you know, we need to have a debt service fund, which is what this, this will be a vehicle for that, but also we really just want to account for this entire project within one fund. Uh, so the commissioners, um, can see that. Um, so that is, uh, the impetus for that, so creating the county courthouse renovation fund. Um, and you have a requirement that the county managers present periodic updates, not less than quarterly to the VSCC regarding the administration and management of the county courthouse renovation fund.
Yeah. Would this also, great, thanks for that background, would this also be where things like the half a million from the underfunded courts would get deposited?
Yes.
You know, so is there all funding going towards the renovation?
Yes.
Okay, and then also I think we had the previously appropriated.
Funding in the contingent fund, yeah.
Funding, would that transfer over as well? Okay, great. So this is where all of that money that we talked about for the whole project will end up, great, great. I, I'll just, and I'll just say, I mean, yeah, to, it was gonna break my heart if we had to return that three and a half million from the federal grant for this project. So I'm really glad to see us able to move ahead and not, not lose out on that. Um, any questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
Great.
I'll move to approve Resolution 24-46, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado, establishing a county courthouse renovation fund.
Great, I'll second.
Nothing further for me?
For me? Uh, great, call, yeah, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, so, um, I just, uh, Resolution 2024-46 is approved, establishing a courthouse renovation fund. Okay. Um, we did J E M Dutch Acres, um, discussion and consideration. So moving on to, um, discussion and consideration of a service order with Applied Tech to engage in a tier-two co-managed plan.
Yeah, so we have been engaged with Applied Tech as a managed service provider for our IT since 2020, when they were the Platte River Network. And it looks like we are still operating under that same agreement and it's time to true it up and clean it up so that our plan reflects what we look like at Lake County. So an example of that on our current plan is showing that Lake County has five servers, four locations and 45 workstations. I think that we can all recognize that we have more than four locations and 45 people using a computer.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the, the locations were for the server locations, though.
No, like general locations.
Okay.
So.
Because I think those, sorry, my recollection is that was like DHS Airport, Road and Bridge and the courthouse, but.
So we are going to upgrade to nine servers because that accurately reflects what we will have. Um, 71 workstations, because that's the amount of Microsoft licensing that we have. Um, and then 10 locations that really have a technology base at them. So the majority of this plan is just making sure that their numbers match our numbers. A really important part of this plan as well is going to be management of our firewalls. So you may have remembered in May that we had, um, a substantial expense when our firewalls were not managed and we had a lapse in service. So this is going to cover that same team brand as well in firewall renewals. It's also going to help us acquire new firewalls because every location that we, um, installed Bureau at, that is connecting to our network will need a firewall. So that's going to be a cost of about $10,000, but that is rolled into the cost of this plan as well. So it's really physically prudent for firewall, but also the way that we're using Applied Tech right now to engage in this continued relationship. They are managing our network, our servers and also our security. My goal, as you all know, is really to build an in-house expertise and, and continuity in IT so that when this turns in 36 months, we can be independent. Um, and I'm really hopeful that we can get there because our relationship with Applied Tech not only has been like, hey, can you fix this, but it's been learning mentorship and like, hey, let me help you figure this out.
Independence is great, but also I wouldn't oppose an ongoing relationship to some lower like engagement because there's always something and the IT department has been in flux, having zero to one.
Yeah.
To maybe two, to zero people at times, which is.
So I'll amend that. I'd like to reduce our stress level. By the way, when I started this conversation on Applied Tech, I was like, just take us, take all of us. I don't want a co-managed plan. You, like, just take it. And they're like, no, you're actually? Okay, you can be co-managed. I was like, no, we can't do it. And they're like, no, you're better than some of our clients. These are the tickets we're seeing. This is all you need. I was like, are you sure? So they talked me out of more money.
Appreciate that.
It's a good, good trade.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, all right. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, no.
I'll move to approve the, um, service order with Applied Tech to engage in a tier-two co-managed plan.
I'll second. No further questions for me? Uh, just say, yeah, thanks for working through all that and continuing to get things in order on the IT side. Uh, so call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, great. Uh, that service order with Applied Tech engaging in a tier-two co-managed plan is approved. Alrighty, uh, discussion and consideration of a purchase order with Zendesk for an IT ticketing system. Liz?
Yeah, so since coming into this role in operations, I recognize that we really need some sort of IT ticketing system. A centralized hub for all staffs to be able to put in a query and for it to be managed, whether it's an urgent or whether it's a rather low ticket, to manage whether that ticket is closed or. to manage whether that ticket is closed or if it's still open, and then we will be adding a third I T staff member in January. So now that we have those three people, communication tools to push those tickets to different areas. So with this, we'll be able to empirically know what kind of tickets we're getting, so this feeds into kind of that independence. What kind of tickets are we getting, how are managing them, and what areas do we develop content expertise in, cause we're pushing it out to Applied Tech. So I explored a couple of different options for an I T ticketing system. Zendesk is probably the most prevalent in that market. We're looking for three users on the backend, being two I T specialists, fifty-five dollars per year. Um, and I really think it's gonna offer us some insight into how I T is being used and how we're managing it at Lake County.
And, and I guess the question I had then, that's just not a service that, like, we could do through the Applied Tech contract?
So Applied Tech uses Zendesk, and when I asked them about ticketing, and I was like, hey, I'm really looking at this, what can you do? And they're like, wait a minute, you don't have a ticketing system? And I was like, no, and then they did that, just like chat. So, I think that it's also important to recognize, Sarah found an artifact from twenty seventeen that we have been trying to engage in a ticketing system, and it's never really got off the ground. Um, and I think that we're in this moment, as we figure out how to develop and support I T, that we really need to know an centralized platform versus an email, cause there's lots of continuity right there, how we are I T-ing well, and where we can improve at Lake County government.
Yeah, I re- I just brought that up mostly because, do we have something that's like, I don't know, some, some subset of Applied Tech that we're just not utilizing, which I am certain you would have explored?
Yes.
Or do we have something that we are subscribed to that we don't need and aren't using?
I feel pretty confident saying there's not something subscribed.
And I felt like it was an internal, like, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then as far as I, Applied Tech, I did look with them, that we can contract through them to get a service. And I think sometimes it's great to use them as a middle person, and then I think sometimes we can just engage by ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but there is no renewing charge showing evidence of any sort of ticketing system.
Okay.
And then Tom's credit card has been turned off for probably about two months, so.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Right, okay, all right.
Good.
No, I didn't think this was important.
Um, yeah, okay, and, and that was good, I mean, that answer for me is good, like, as long as Applied Tech is on board with this, and there's not sort of conflicting communication, that's great.
I will move to approve the purchase order with Zendesk for an I T ticketing system, and this, I'll leave that, but.
I'll second.
This is, sorry, I don't remember, annual?
So it's an annual term?
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah. Cool, uh, I've been remiss in asking for all of these, whether they're pending legal review, but I will say they're good to go unless,
Please, I'm. Well, in.
Or, or if they're low enough that they, that they're pretty standardized.
Well, the, the, in terms of the proof or the, it's a purchase order with all these softwares and the service things, it's all online, in terms of the actual negotiable.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So, in, yeah, you need a proof, you need a legal review, all these, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, for sure. Okay?
Nothing.
Uh, great, uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, so that purchase order with Zendesk for an I T ticketing system is approved?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, discussion and consideration of a purchase order with OpenSense to create a signature block for county employee signature unification.
Sammy.
Hi, um, so I think this is slightly incorrect on the edge, uh, to my understanding, it's like Chris just mentioned, it's a service agreement, it's not a purchase order.
Okay. Okay.
About the order, we have a purchase order, we're supposed to, or something, is it?
We have them drafted, um, and they're in the packet, so as long as that's the right kind of agreement with it.
Yeah. That's, that's, I'm sorry, I thought that's what we're doing, like, we did with the other I T applications, for a purchase and review.
So, they are not gonna take the purchase order, it's a software, it's a service, it's an online pay portal, you know, we can set it, and when I started talking to Zendesk, they said they were not open to any redlining or changes unless we were an organization of up to two hundred people. You know, it's a hundred and fifty-six dollars a year, and they, um, so I, I would encourage kind of like thoughtfulness.
I- i- and so now I'm confused, cause the idea that was just approved was for a purchase and review through the desk?
So, I can.
Do they have a, like, order or something?
So we do have an online order form, it's not gonna be the Lake County Government purchase order.
I mean, I think, if, if I'm hearing this, I mean, it's, that, that's such a low amount, I mean, I think that would be within the discretion of the communications manager, or?
It's, yeah, it's. Well, yeah, the, with just the understanding, and I'm sure Liz and Tim have talked about this, that the terms and, that these online terms typically are not ones we, uh, accept otherwise, and the risk of liability for that, including that we pretty much say that even if they mess stuff up, we're miserable.
Hmm, yeah. I mean.
But there, yeah, Liz and I have discussed the, that R O I to county, in terms of the efficiency we're trying to achieve is, is there, and the dollar up is low.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable with.
Yeah.
I'm in accord with these as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comment, Chris, I mean, I think, you know, we all know in our, probably our personal lives, like, you just, you don't really have a choice to click on agree to the terms and conditions, like, on a lot of these things, so, um, um, yeah, I think that is what it is.
Okay. Yep.
For promotion, approve, I guess, like, so a- approve the expenditure for this.
Wait.
So y'all already approved the Zendesk one month?
Yeah, 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 no, I'm, I'm.
Y'all approved the P O that might be.
So, I mean, I think my understanding is, is that we're just, we're, we are approving the purchase of the OpenSense service, uh, and authorizing the communications manager to, to make that purchase, but, but.
Can I have a, I have a question, though?
Yeah.
I'm, I, can you explain to me the need for this forty-eight hundred dollar annual expense for email signatures? And why we can't just ask everybody to have the same email signature?
Yeah, so there's two different reasons, well, there's three different reasons. So I think that it's been incredibly challenging to galvanize all Lake County government staff to have a unified signature. Paired with that, this, we know that it's all gonna be W C A D compliant, the Web Compliance Accessibility Guidelines two point one. We know that it will have the alt text, we know that it's gonna have the color, um, differentiation that you need, so that it's accessible to all visual, um, users. Now, we could do that, I would say that it would be over eight hundred dollars in labor annually to review every single, again, staff member's signature. Um, so it really kind of provides some assurance that we're meeting that accessibility, and provides that brand identity and continuity. And then, um, and one more point, oh, we're gonna fix the randomly enlarging yellow man. I don't know if you have experienced that, but we've really struggled with our seal changing sizes, we have done all sorts of stuff in Photoshop to manipulate the pixel width and sizes. It's not fixing it, and sometimes you get an email seal and it's this big.
Yeah, I've done that with other, other organization things, for those images.
Yeah, so, those are the three reasons that we really wanna tap into a service like this. When we engaged with, um, Bert Holt, uh, to do some of our graphic designing and re-rendering, he really kind of led us onto a service like this, as kind of a turnkey tool to move forward with that signature unification. And we explored several of them with the county attorney's office as well.
They do offer, um, options to turn on certain customizations, so if people wanna put on their upcoming out of office, or, um, if they all are bilingual and they wanna add that, or if they wanna add a link to their signature, um, we have the ability to customize that, sell that.
I guess I'm still, I'm sorry to say, I just don't, I don't understand why we can't actually do that, like, through every department.
Well, we've tried, and I think you can see that with.
Sure is.
Current board's signature lines, one commissioner has updated, the new branding, and that, where people have, some things just aren't consistent, so the branding isn't consistent.
But if we, like, sit and talk and do it.
We, yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, the point I'm hearing is that, yes, that absolutely mean, but to have some person go to every single county employee and like, sit with them and fix what's in their email, signature line would take literally more time, you know, staff time, than at the cost of this, and this would just be done top-down, and it would always be accurate, and.
How do, how do they access, like, how does that work, how does it actually get implemented?
They can, um, access the directory of our Microsoft, and then when people start new, um, it'll automatically create a new signature for them in our brand that we're using, um, and then when people go, so we got a quote for two hundred seats, that's a dollar per user per month, and then two hundred dollars per month for licensing. I guess, for use, and then, um, so they, they access our directory, so they automatically generate signatures for people.
And that's not like a feature in Microsoft, is it?
No, they offer, they offer like a similar service, but it's super restricted, and it's not, like, we need a link, very bad, it's very, very. And this company also works with, uh, dozens of local governments around the same facility.
I could check those references. Burn down that before.
We can do that, yeah.
Surely their service is perfect, other people use them. No, I, I, I mean, Sarah, I agree with you, I mean, like, on, uh, the first take, I was like, really? But, you know, I mean, yeah, it's inconsistent. You know, look at that first, and it takes staff time to fix it. Um, I guess I had a question, is, do you know, can, I mean, a lot of people, you know, they'll highlight in their signature line, like, an upcoming event in their department or something, is, can it, can people insert like a little customizable thing that is still compliant with our branding? Yeah. That, and that I would hate to lose with a top-down imposed solution.
Yeah. No, we can still offer this little, like, I guess, like, out of office, or, if I like, go on.
Yeah. Yeah, or like an upcoming town hall of that department or event or something.
Does that go through this vendor, or do you arrange that?
No, it's through them.
And then, so somebody would email that, like, the need to put an out of office in their email and have them?
Yeah, to my knowledge, yeah. Uh, something they can like quickly turn on, or, what I can.
But how do, I think that's, feels like that needs to have some, yeah, organization of who's gonna do that, or what, cause that happens probably many times a day, perhaps. I mean, people can be out of the office for a conference, right, like, I don't know, I mean, is that just another problem? Or like, communication breakdown is not gonna happen? I, I, I'm getting that, if we do this, I'm understanding that people cannot put an out of the office on their email. Is that correct, or no?
No, your vacation responder can still, excuse me, your out of office responder, you can always automatic reply and turn that on.
You, you would just be able to?
But you're talking about like an add-on to your signature, so for example, the county attorney's office has their privacy noticed swimmer and stuff, that can get put on there as an extra piece. So I think that as we work for brand identity and cohesion, I don't really see it as a standard practice to put out of office in your signature?
Right, but you're starting about the module, like, whatever module it is for out of office, are you just talking about that applying to, like, your signature line?
You know, so that's, okay, so that's for like upcoming, right? I'm gonna be out next week for Christmas, so at the beginning of December, I put that in my signature line and say upcoming days up. And then when I'm out of office, I put up my out of office saying I'm out of office, leave you alone.
Yeah.
Do not text me.
Okay.
And so I think for, um, events that impact all staff, so for example, the coming closure for the holidays, that would be really easy to put in.
Right.
Um, and just automatically add that to everyone's signature for that period and then remove it. Cause we've also seen those emails that say, I'm out of office till May sixth, and you're like, well, it's December.
Right.
I don't wanna, example A over there. So, I think that it offers us a lot of opportunity to really clearly communicate with the community under one brand identity, um, and return the investment of communication manager's time.
I, I guess, uh, I mean, uh, following question to that is, are, are we locked into a year contract, or is it month by month? Just, I mean, if we get it and we hate it, like, are we?
Uh, it's a bit easier.
Okay. Sorry, just. Trying to nurse this computer through the end of the term.
I know. I, yeah, I mean, I don't have any, I, I don't love it, but.
No, I mean, it seems, it seems like, yeah, uh, yeah.
Annual contract, you can. I'm just gonna move to approve the purchase order of, uh, OpenSense.
Uh, I'll second. Um, and are those, sorry, are we, are we, did? Is it a purchase order, or is it approval to, for the, um, for the communications manager to make this expense?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so can you repeat?
Sure.
So not a purchase order, but just approval for the communications manager?
Okay, um, uh, I'll move to approve the communications manager, um, making expense with the engagement with OpenSense Inc. For forty-eight hundred dollars for the year twenty twenty-five, year twenty twenty-five?
Okay, uh, I'll second. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sorry to belabor that.
Yeah.
Um, discussion and consideration of a sublease renewal between Lake County Government and Summit Community Care Clinic at seven thirty-five Highway twenty-four.
Yeah, so, in September twenty twenty-three, we started to lease seven thirty-five Highway twenty-four for, uh, Public Health and Human Services. At the same time, we had a sublease agreement with Summit Community Care Clinic, which is a federally qualified healthcare center at K H C, uh, to share that location with us, so we have a sublease agreement with them. Uh, the first fifteen months, so since September twenty twenty-three, we have given them free rent, with ex- expectation that they will be, start to be providing services five days a week, and fully take over our family planning or Title X, uh, services. Um, they are still at two days a week right now, with promises to be five days a week by July. Um, and as part of that previous sublease agreement, we were to renegotiate it and have them start paying rent January one twenty twenty-five. Uh, so this is the negotiated, uh, new sublease, they will start paying twenty fifty, two thousand dollars and fifty, two thousand fifty dollars, um, starting January one twenty twenty-five, uh, and it's only a six-month lease, uh, sublease, because, um, we are going to hold them to that five days a week, and starting in July. And if they cannot provide those services, then we need to renegotiate if it makes sense to continue to give them space.
Yeah.
Um, other things in this sublease, in addition to asking them to pay rent, is just clarifying that, yes, we will continue to pay utilities, but no, we are not going to continue to provide them I T support or internet, there's been some issues there, and so wanting to protect uh, our I T department to, for some county, uh, staff, so, um, that's that.
Great. I didn't have any further questions on that.
I will do not, either.
Okay.
Um, I'll move to approve the first amend- amendment to our sublease agreement for seven twenty-four Highway twenty-four, that will Colorado, made of four six. Between, like, Lake County and Summit Care, Summit Community Care.
Great, um, I will second. Any questions, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, so, uh, that sublease renewal of, uh, is approved. Um, discussion and consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between Lake County and Garfield County for economic assistance services.
Yeah, so I'm gonna do that for Laura, um, so, just giving full information here. Um, the Department of Human Services is structurally required to process public assistance applications. We also are monitored by the state to do so in a timely manner. Um, we have had almost a full staff turnover, um, for various reasons in that unit, and it takes a long time to train folks on how eligibility for. And it takes a long time to train folks on how eligibility for very complex public assistance programs, in addition to the learning state systems. Uh, usually takes at least six months to do so. So as we are training that team, we are hoping to have an I G A with Garfield County to have their economic security team. Um, support us in processing applications so that Lake County residents can have timely access to public benefits. Uh, this is pretty normal with human services departments, they're basically getting overtime, we're paying for it, we have cost savings because of vacancy savings, so.
Okay. So it's within current budget, it's not supplemental, okay?
Yes. It's an up to the amount, you don't know, uh, but.
Yeah. Yeah, just, yeah.
Um, I'll move to approve the I G A between Lake County and Garfield County for Economic Assistance Services, not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you for finding, I mean, I've seen similar arrangements. Um, and it's very important that we try to keep our responsiveness high, so thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, uh, so the I G A in Lake County and Garfield County for Economic Assistance Services is approved. Um, discussion and consideration of renewal of a memorandum of understanding with Solvista for Disaster Behavioral Health Services for the Office of Emergency Management and Public Health. Claire?
Hi, so this is re-upping an M O U of Solvista, the last record of this M O U we found was in twenty sixteen. Um, they reached out to us asking to update their records, um, traditionally what they provide us with is exactly what it says, Disaster Behavioral Health Team. So that service is available to us free of cost, um, with no limit on, um, timing for how long they'll stay. Um, they'll send trained, qualified, uh, behavioral health people to come up and be with our community, whether it be in shelters, during community meetings, um. Really whatever they need, they've even done food and water deliveries and just answered phone lines before. Um, just to help our community be an extra set of hands, um, they're trained in I C S. They're not providing clinical, uh, mental health support, just very much psychological first aid during times of crisis. Um, so I've been working with the legal team, uh, to kind of bring this M O U up to standard, so the one that they originally sent us was like two paragraphs long. Um, our legal team's done a really good job of fleshing that out and really defining our roles and responsibilities. So there is a little bit, um, of negotiation to still be done, so the plan today was to ask for a pending final legal review. Um, and really what that final part is, is putting in what are the responsibilities of O E M and what are the responsibilities of Solvista. So I met with the Solvista disaster coordinator this morning, um, and she was actually really surprised that I was asking that question. Um, and it was good conversation, she's like, you know, we'll just do anything for you, we're free of charge, we just wanna be here to help, and I said, okay, let's talk through some things. Um, so I sent that feedback over to legal this morning, um, I requested that we put in a line saying that, um, Solvista will be briefed when they come on by O E M staff or E O C staff to understand what we need of them, make sure everyone's on the same page. And I requested that post-incident Solvista send us a report of their staff, um, how many staff they sent, how many volunteers, how many hours they spent and what they did, so we can use that for our cost tracking. Um, so just kind of little things like that, um, so I sent that feedback back to legal, I know Chris custom thought she wants to weigh in on. Um, but that initial one has been sent to Solvista for their review.
So they have already needed, okay, that was my concern, is if they hadn't seen the draft, all of us were concerned with asking for approval and a final legal review, if they hadn't seen it yet.
Yeah, no, that has been sent to them, they did review it, they were a little shell-shocked at how long it had gotten, uh, but we're just updating it to best practice and they were excited to go through this new template. Um, so they have seen it as in their review, we under, um, they're under, they know what I'm asking our legal team to put in. Um, and then when they're done with that, they'll, they'll send it back to them and it'll go to their legal team and they don't anticipate any issues, so.
If that's, if they've seen the initial draft, um, um, with approval pending, final review, I'll see substantive issues with their additions, that's all. I just didn't want us to finalize it on our end and not have seen it yet, thank you for clarification.
Yeah. No, they have seen it.
Thank you. I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Lake County and Solvista Health for Disaster-Related Behavioral Health Support, pending final legal review.
I'll second. Yeah, no further.
No.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, that is approved, pending final legal review.
Yes, can we explain?
Thanks. Um, discussion and consideration of an M O U with Spark Community Foundation, uh, to provide services for runaway and homeless youth and their families, Gloria.
Hello, thank you. Um, yes, so this is the, um, traditional scope of services that Red Brown, um, has been providing, um, over the years, and it's a annual renewal. Um, within the scope of services, um, there are small pockets of funding that, um, the Rural Collaborative for Homeless and Runaway Youth. Um, they are the ones that apply for, um, different sources of funding, like federal funding and state funding. And then, um, through this agreement, um, Lake County, um, opts in to be part of their, like, consortium. And they allocate, um, some funding to every, um, site. To be able to provide, um, it's kind of a wide array of, um, services to homeless youth and runaway youth. Um, so yeah, we can start, uh, annual renewal with them. Um, the Spark Community Foundation, um, and I believe Shiloh House, they both have a role in, like, discourse. Um, and and how the funds really funnel down to us, but basically we get an allocation, which this year, um, is about thirty thousand. And, um, some of that is, um, can get staff time reimbursed. Um, a very small amount of staff time can get reimbursed, um, but the rest of the funds are are supportive services to homeless and unaccompanied youth. And then, um, I can talk about the next one too, because they kind of go together. Um, there's one specific, um, new pilot model within this, um, scope of services. That, um, is requiring us to, um, if we opt into that specific model. Um, it's requiring us to recruit, uh, AmeriCorps Vista. Um, so that kind of comes together, um, and so by us, you know, like. Basically saying, yes, we're gonna service, um, with one of these models, we will have to also do the AmeriCorps Vista. Um, and the AmeriCorps Vista would be a young person that we recruit from our community. Um, they would directly apply to AmeriCorps and get paid through AmeriCorps. Um, and we would just serve as their, um, site, um, that they would work with and site supervision to monitor the activities. Um, and basically their activities would involve, um, community, um, community organizing and engagement around, um, homeless.
So in order to participate in the consortium member agreement, you need to do the AmeriCorps?
That other component is, yeah. Is it, yeah, this is new to.
That's new to this?
Yeah, that's new to this, um, there are, there are some, um, like, services we can still offer through the consortium. Um, there's like one specific, it's called the, um, Runaway and Homeless Youth Pro, like, Demonstration Project. And it's a new model that would ask us to serve at least four youth in that model, and that's the component that's asking us to recruit the Vista.
Serve for youth with a youth peer?
Uh-huh, yeah, pretty.
Was there any, and I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, I don't think I saw, there's no exemption? Or is there any conversation on concern of like how small we are with having like? The ability to hire for somebody interested in that and what happens should we fail to be able to find someone for that position? Do you think you'll be successful in that, are you worried about that with, you know, peer, kind of?
I think we have some, um, great youth, I think that, um, because we've kind of like already, you know, um, put the word out there. Um, and we have some great youth candidates that have been like served by our program.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, again, we have put the word out there, I think we haven't like necessarily engaged in super, you know, like, deep recruiting. So I think that we can be successful in recruiting a youth that has actually like been served in our program. Um, the other thing is that, that we have seen, um, the Rural Collaborative has also said if we are not successful. Um, because the AmeriCorps Vistas, um, are exist in other counties too, there's a possibility of us being able to share a Vista with like a neighbor county.
Okay.
Okay.
And again, that, like, our first step would be, yes, we can hire someone that has actually, you know, experienced experience and has been served through our program. Um, and we do have, um, office space right now, hopefully, until they determine what to do with with it. Um, but anyway, if if we're able to continue to utilize our space in the school district, we do have, uh, vacant, um, cubicle. And, um, office equipment as far as a computer, they would get from AmeriCorps or from the Rural Collaborative. And I've bought in all of that. So it's literally like the space and the site supervision and just, you know, recruiting and monitoring their activities.
I have a question back on this Spark Community Foundation, so the i- i- is that just a grant? That, you know, i- i- as the amendment says, it's either a staff reimbursement, you're reimbursing for staff time or, um, or sort of pass-through services? Is there, are there Spark Community Foundation staff who provide services directly to us or is it just a grant?
Um, no, it's just, um, just the.
I don't mean just, but like.
Yeah, just the funding.
Yeah.
Um, and the way that we structure it is basically one of our current staff. Um, gets the caseload, so they will service the caseload of youth and then we take whatever amount we're able to get reimbursed and, um, invoice for that. To the Spark Community Foundation, so that we get reimbursed for a little bit of the staff time. Um, and then, you know, so essentially we don't even like have staff initially like code it, code their staff time to that. And so we can see like, okay, because it's only about, you know, like seven thousand or thirteen thousand, that we go for staff time. Uh, but we still like collect it back, so we make sure that like whatever the maximum staff, um, reimbursement, um, is allowed, that we get that back based on the case of that we settled.
Thanks. Um, all right, I'll then make motion to approve the M O U, remember memorandum of understanding of Colorado Rural Collaborative for Runway and Homeless Youth Consortium Member Agreement fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
I'll second. Uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, so, uh, that, uh, consortium member agreement, uh, is approved. And then, yeah, can move on to the next one as well?
And then I'll move to approve. The memorandum of understanding between Shiloh House's Youth Move Colorado AmeriCorps Vista Program. Smooth Colorado, yeah, okay, sorry, and Lake County Human Services Wraparound Program.
Great, I'll second.
No, I think that for me, thanks.
Uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, so that M O U, uh, is also approved, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Uh, discussion consideration of the P S A with Vale Health, Behavioral Health, uh, for Behavioral Health Services to Lake County through the Diversus Grant.
Yeah, so I was here November nineteenth and I talked about the Diversus Grant, um, where it would allow us to pay for behavioral health provider during, for example, behavioral health to use for Lake County. During that time, we published an R I P, um, Vale Health responded to our R I P, uh, should be approval. The P S A for Vale Health to provide their services.
One response?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's within the year for him?
Yep, that'll be, yep, I'll do the grant.
All right. I don't have any further questions for you either, um, I'll move to approve the P S A with Vale Health, Behavioral Health, for Behavioral Health Services to Lake County through Diversa, the Diversus Grant.
I'll second. Uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, that, uh, P S A with Vale Health, Behavioral Health is approved. Thanks. Um, I have a quick break listed here, I could, I could take a quick, break, break, break.
Okay.
Uh, just throw a water. And then keep rolling. Keep rolling. Um so we are on discussion and consideration of an amendment to the professional services agreement with Brown and Caldwell to perform an engineering assessment and due diligence related to Lake County water resources and prospective water rights. Uh Bryce, you have the floor.
Thank you, Board. Good afternoon. Sorry not to be able to be there in person today. Um this is just to follow up, this is work that's already been done. This was an initial assessment of water rights that was done on a ranch, you know, to see their availability and if the county would be interested. It was done in the spring and we've discussed the outcome of these results. Um but the reason we're here is because that work was done under the PSA that Brown and Caldwell had that covered the water development plan work they were doing, which is grant funded. And so wanted to separate this out for budgeting purposes. Um and just make it separate so we can take care of it a different way. So like I said, define scope of work that's already taken place, defined amount, which is ten thousand three hundred forty dollars. Um this was a, you know, kind of decided to come out of the commissioner's budget, but in discussions with Jane Schaefer at PROS, we do have some room in her budget that she had for conservation transaction fees. And she has kind of offered to cover this expense um out of that budget item so that we can kind of prove that to our partners at Trust for Public Lands that we're also investing in um, you know, the due diligence process on this potential water rights asset.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that make, yeah, does that make sense to tidy things up, keep it simpler?
Yes.
Or more complicated, but better tract?
Um yeah, I don't have any other questions. I have to move forward. Um move to approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with Brown and Caldwell um for the performance of engineering and engineering assessment and due diligence related to Lake County water resources.
Okay, I'll second.
Uh no, nothing further for me?
Great. Um just call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great. So that PSA amendment uh with Brown and Caldwell is approved. Uh discussion and consideration of an IGA between Lake County and Lake County School District, R one, for the Lake County Community Park Synthetic Turf Field. Karen?
Yeah, so um we already currently have an IGA with the school district for the turf field, so we're just looking to revisit the IGA. Since we just had the turf redone and get a little bit more up to date um with things. Um since the contract was made in two thousand nine, obviously a lot of things have changed. Um we're not looking to make any major changes. Some of the changes are just to help us overall as a department become a little bit more organized with field usage. Um so suggested changes to that would be um to have the school district or really whoever's using the field fill out a facility request form, just like we do um for their facilities. Um and that will um help let us know. I mean, they do let us know when practice times are, but they, it's almost just more like an email or a general like, here's the game schedule. We almost want a little bit more advanced notice. Um just so when we start coordinating things, we're not double booking. We have had that issue in the past and I think it's just because things have just been
Yeah.
Like, yeah, like I said, when this was done in two thousand nine, the programming was much smaller. So um due to school district expanding and rec expanding, we just want to make sure that the field, like we want it to continue to be used by both entities, but um just a little bit more organized, structural, yeah.
Maximize use, so less confusion and frustration.
Um so just having them fill out a form um that we can provide with practice days and times. In the previous um agreement, it designated um four to six to middle school and high school sports. And then six to eight was for community or rec programming. Um we're open to changing that and actually would like to see that changed. We don't feel that um the school district should just have four to six and then we have six to eight. For example, they had a coach last year that needed a six to eight practice and we were happy to accommodate that. Um especially I know with working schedules, sometimes it's hard to get coaches there at four or five. Um and we would also like some of our little kid practices maybe a little bit earlier, especially if the coach can can practice earlier. Um another thing that we will need to address is um snow removal on the field. Um now that we have the turf replaced, um we won't be able to allow heavy equipment on the field like we have in the past. Um so clearing of the snow is not going to be a guarantee. Um we can look at some possible, I don't know, when when we were redoing the field, they were, the contractors were talking to us about certain ways that we could remove the field, like possible um like the gator with the PVC pipe on the bottom, so we're not um taking any turf up, but I don't think that um unless you live here, how much snow is actually on the field? And it does normally take us at least a week, if not more, to clear with the heavy equipment. So um just addressing that in the IGA, it's not going to be a guarantee in the springtime.
Yeah, okay.
And that's, those are the basic changes, yeah.
And the school district seen this yet or no?
No, we um we've had brief communication, but um these are just things that we are bringing up to you guys to kind of say, hey, here are some of the changes. We definitely don't want to make things difficult on either party, like we still want to have a great partnership. It's just, like I said, the agreement was made in two thousand nine, we have new turf, programming has changed. Um
Aside from the IGA, curious, is the, is there going to be a completely different way that we do remove snow from the uh field?
So those are gonna have, yeah, I don't know. Like I said, but there, we could have a possible use of like the gator with a plow with some sort of bottom on the foot.
Yeah, non-nuttal.
At the same time, like I, I don't know if that's even possible, to be honest.
Right. Well, no, I guess I'm asking, are we concerned with warranty issues? I I would assume that we would still need to use heavy equipment, but just have our folks use the heavy equipment.
Our guidance from the company was no heavy equipment on the field, period. And we have had the field damaged in previous years when heavy equipment has been used um and not used properly or correctly. And then the field was damaged and we had to have replacement in certain parts.
Hmm.
So I think our goal is the field lasted a lot longer than it was supposed to. So we want to just ensure um that it lasts as long as possible again.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I did see the heavy equipment in the um facility requests, just, I mean, it sounds like all of those, what were they, three or four? Were include already in the draft, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um the three, okay.
I, I did see, I saw, I, I thought I saw Amy Peters, um I think it's the athletic director from the school district online. I don't know, I mean, it sounds like the, the decision of this, I mean, the the agenda item for this is just like our like the O C C agreement to begin and, you know, discussing this with the school district. So I'm not sure, I mean, I'm I'm happy for the school district to weigh in, but I, I think it sounds like at this point, it's just a question of beginning that discussion with them. Is that right?
Yeah. I, that's fine. We frankly just stumbled across the agenda item, so we look forward to learning more.
Excellent. Not trying to fly inside you, we're just, yeah. Getting the discussion going on our end to start the discussion with you, so.
Yeah, that sounds awesome. We'll work with Karen and Felicia and their team. That sounds very in the spirit of how we want to be working with the rec department, so no concerns here.
Okay. Um I didn't have any further questions. I mean, just, yeah, it would be, I mean, waiting for the snow to melt naturally could really drag on, so I think, yeah, I would definitely be interested in figuring out if there's, yeah, some soft touch.
Yeah. And that was exactly what basically happened this year, is we did clap, we did plow um and clear the snow. And then we've got a lot more snow and unfortunately um the field was already thawed out, so we couldn't put any heavy equipment on there. So then we were, yeah, we were all in a big time bind.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I hadn't heard that. Okay, so when it's frozen, you can put heavy equipment on, but once it's
That was with the old turf.
Thawed out, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But this, the guidance that we got this time was absolutely no heavy equipment, even a skidster, it's just too risky.
Yeah.
You need to shovel it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I mean, is that, well, you can talk offline, whether that's like, or
And I don't do like, we're not on a hard no, it's just that we're not putting the heavy equipment, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it might, it might be necessary and then you guys will just figure it out, but what, what you need to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I mean, I can totally understand the type, yeah, whether it's frozen or not and the time of year and getting it on there multiple times. And we've always had that in um in mind. Um yeah.
Good luck. Yes, thank you. We'll let you guys know when it's time to shovel.
Okay.
You gotta get a first to sign up. I'll send it up and invite.
Um alright, I'll uh move to approve uh, I guess, the IGA between Lake County and the Lake County School District, R one, for the Lake County Community Park Synthetic Turf Field. Pending um, you know, our partners' review and response. Um and depending on, and legal review.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, and I'll go on, so it's not included in the motion. Yeah, just if there's anything, great, of course, we'll hear back from you, I suppose, if if there's any concerns that come up in your discussion.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Okay, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Um discussion and consideration of a PSA between PROS and Cloud City Curling Club outlining the annual agreement terms for operations.
Yeah, um I don't know if you guys know this, curling's a very popular sport here in Lake County and it continues to grow and we just can't seem to have enough ice. Um but, so um when the curling, um sorry, I'm reading and I'm trying to talk. So in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen is when we first had our curling league um here in Lego. And a lot of it, um it was all rec program, programming, but a lot of it was dedicated and happened because of so many community members. Um and I think it was twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the curling club was created. Um and with that, um there was one of those fun handshake agreements where we um took in, so we take the registrations and then we would give um the curling club fifty percent of um our revenue. Um we are now wanting to get into more of a professional agreement um where we list out exactly who does what. Um so we are going into a sixty forty agreement um to where the county contributes um the property where the curling sheet is housed on. Um any small storage space at Huck Finn, um water and electricity program administration, including signature labor, scheduling, communication, collecting of fees, prizes for winners, um plowing of the parking lot. And we do cover staff prep, um staff for ice prep, weekly maintenance and program supervision. Um curling contributions, our materials um to build a curling sheet, wood, the tarps, um start of the season, ice making, labor and specialized equipments, and the weekly ice maintenance for duration of the curling season. Oh, and then they also have volunteers for ice prep for the curling league nights. Um they also assist with night of program supervision, setup, teardown, closing the facilities and the curling stones and such. So.
So, great, thank, um thank you. The one thing I thought, I heard like a bit of overlap on, and I'm, I mean, I think it's clear in the agreement, but like, so who, so I think they're like on the weekly ice maintenance, what's the rec department's role versus the club?
Yeah, so we do pay two staff members to help with that weekly ice prep. Um but it actually takes more than just two staff members, so we do have volunteers, or the curling club's really great about getting volunteers to help with that too.
Okay.
Um in our scheduling, we actually set out certain teams to help throughout certain weeks.
Gotcha.
Um and then when they're, before curling starts, when they're setting everything up, the curling club also sends out their mass email to ask for volunteers to help um get the whole big setup.
Okay, so it's a joint effort, but like on our side, it's just specifying how much we pitch in on that, yeah. Okay.
Um just tiny, the last number nine, with their, what they'll do, the Cloud City Curling Club shall only be permitted to sell their merchandise on the property.
Mm-hmm.
Not any kind of concession items or food. Um I, I understand the spirit of that, but it might sound like they're only allowed to sell their merchandise on the prop, or the only thing allowed to be sold on the property is their merchandise, not concessions, concession items or food. Maybe just like block that, that wording around a little bit.
Block that.
Um and then the I don't know that they want to sell concession, concession items or food, but if, I'm just trying to understand what the, what is the um reason for that?
Um because we sell concession items inside the ice rink.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. I was like, I don't see why they, yeah, I've never heard of them wanting to do that, but
Well, we had had like other programs when we, we've started selling concession at more things and then we'll have other people wanting to do concessions, so now we're just starting to make it more firm, like if we have concessions, like we don't want to have a competing entity.
Okay. Okay.
And then, um yeah, maybe just, uh has this gone through like agreement or approval from, from the curling club side?
Yeah, we have been working with them. Um they have not signed yet, so we're kind of just looking also for
And they finally look at you?
Uh-huh, yep, yep. But I have been working with Chris and Melissa to get this.
Great.
And then we've also been working with the club as well.
Okay.
And then number seven for the, their, I think it was their inaugural event last year at the senior center.
Mm-hmm.
And I think they were allowed to have drinks.
So this is just for
Just for the, like, dining?
For our week, yep, when they do their separate um the Bonspiel, that is a sec- separate agreement, so they will rent the facility from us, they'll rent the facility from the senior center, and then whatever agreement they have between allowing drinks or whatnot, yeah, approval, yeah.
Yeah, whatever might, approval might happen, okay. Um uh again, I don't, do you think we should change that wording? Or just like regular activities?
Or league activities or
League activities, yeah.
League activities or
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Normal league, because if they're doing special events, so that would still be the league, right, the league event?
Mm-hmm.
Um
Well, so when they do their own events, um they rent the facility from us and that's when we require them to have their own insurance. Um and they're kind of on their own.
So it is really separate?
Yeah.
This is just talking about?
Yep.
The, okay, so the regular league activities, I think.
So you said it reads, if you need the Cloud City Club's regular league events?
Activities.
Activities?
Yeah. Alright. Thanks, Carrie.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, thank you.
Um and
Yeah.
Okay, um I'll move to approve uh the agreement for services. Um the independent contract professional services agreement with the Cloud City Curling Club and the Board of County Commissioners pending the club's final review and final legal review.
Do you want to mention the, the
Oh, with the changes?
Item, the clarification?
With the couple minor
I think that I
Changes in language on item seven and nine?
Um yeah, around concessions and the disagreement covers regular league activities as well.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the language you wanted on concession items, I was pulling that up today to see that it probably says that they're only permitted to sell their merchandise on the property, not any kind of concession items or food?
Probably just like on, on county property, Cloud City or
Maybe during league play, because I think, Sarah, you were reading it that they can only sell merchandise there. And what we're saying is
Yeah, I know that that's not what you're saying. No, I don't want somebody to like break that they're limited to that if they read it the other way, so
Yeah.
Um on on the county property, Cloud City curling club
Sure.
will be permitted to sell their merchandise, but not any kind of concession items or food in competition with Huck Finn.
During league, during league activities, Cloud City Club shall, shall be permitted to sell their merchandise on the property, but not any kind of concession items or things like that. And or
Yeah.
And I'm not hearing.
Okay. I think that works.
Yeah.
Maybe just remove the only.
That's a little
Just remove the word only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just remove the word only.
Yep.
That's it, okay.
I don't know, okay, second.
Okay.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Um discussion and consideration of a bid award for the acquisition of a utility task vehicle, U T V, for winter grooming operations. Jane?
Thank you. PROS deputies initiated conversations in spring twenty twenty four with our county grooming partners to develop a countywide grooming operations plan that helps us to support efforts to consolidate and streamline both our operations and our communications, um focusing specifically on the non-motorized uses and trail systems. So based on conversations and recommendations from our professional grooming partners regarding our options to support the unique needs specifically at the golf course, we are seeking to purchase a U T V with a track system to utilize the pull behind grooming implement that we already own. We actually found out we have two. One of them is living up in the boneyard at the golf course, so we need to take a look at that and see what condition it's in. But our maintenance team is already looking at, or mechanics rather, are looking at the existing Ginsu groomer. Um so we would be looking to transition from the snowcat grooming that's been previously used on this site. Uh and it would only address the concerns for the ma- massive needs. So their golf club board has some concerns about impacts, negative impacts to the golfing infrastructure. So in an effort to address those concerns, um we'll be looking at minimizing the weight impact and moving from a snowcat to a U T V with a pull behind implement exclusively. This also gives us some flexibility with the qualifications and
A UTV with a pull behind implement exclusively. This also gives us some flexibility with the qualifications of the operator. I can't put a sixteen year old in a snowcat, I can't put a sixteen year old in a UTV with a pull behind implement, so that gives us some flexibility with staff we already have hired for seasonal operations with other rec work. We received five bids, um, and we are recommending that we engage with Mountain Dirty Motorsports out of Silverthorne. Based on the most competitive pricing, the shortest lead time, the shortest distance for physical acquisition of the device or the machine. And emergency maintenance available within twenty four hours. So the total out the door quote for the Polaris Ranger XP one thousand with the track system. Is thirty four thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and five cents. This is a budgeted item.
I had a couple of questions, one is, do you think so like routine maintenance, can Public Works?
Yes, that's part of the reason that we're looking at this particular piece of machine.
And all that? Like a simpler machine?
Public Works have already, has already purchased a Ranger this year.
Okay, great, okay. And then, um, you said it's a budgeted request, can you speak more to that, I, like, what budget is that coming under, would, had we, is, was this like a more general budget line item?
No, we have a governing line item, um, it's a little unclear exactly where that figure got calculated, but there's about nine thousand dollars standing in that fund.
Okay.
We also have additional funds in the professional services budget to cover this, we do feel like it would have been used. Otherwise to lease a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
This is just giving us the autonomy to purchase it ourselves outright.
Yeah, and then I think maybe the final question is, do you, do you have any sense of like what the replacement schedule would be? Like, do these things last five years with this kind of use, or?
That's a good question, I don't have that answer exactly, I'm happy to double check with our vendor.
Yeah.
Our chosen vendor.
I do wonder, Michael, do you have, you made some comment, I can't remember where.
About the use of this.
And what the tracks on it, as long as it's used during the winter time, it will last probably five to ten years.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not gonna use those tracks running around that dirt.
Yeah.
And we do have the option of swapping those back out to the tires and utilizing that for rec and open space support in the non-snowy season.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, I'd imagine it's like relatively limited use compared to like maybe like some of the books you do tours on vehicles like this, running like every day. Or multiple times a day, like it's probably not huge, I mean, it's not.
Yeah. Or, when you're, I, I think it's more hours, right, than, than how many years, so it's how many hours you would put on the machine.
Yeah.
And we are looking to groom at the golf course consistently twice a week. In addition to that, anytime there's new snow, but it wouldn't be anything close to the amount of hours that was put on the snowcat machine last season.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. That was it for the, uh, questions, yeah.
Um. Uh, I could. What do I need to say? Um.
For this, for this order, or?
Or, uh, the, the bidding and the funding for the acquisition. Or is it gonna be a purchase order?
Yes, that's the other thing, I'm looking for some guidance on, I needed to buy this like yesterday, so, um, I'd love to know too what our next step is, is there a way to kind of tighten the whole thing?
Are you gonna approve, we could do a purchase order, since it is, it's a good, not service type, so we could.
Yeah. Right.
He would very quickly. Information, film, calling, send that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move to, to, um, uh, take staff's recommendation regarding the five bids received and engage with Mountain Dirty Motorsports. For. Sorry, to execute a purchase order, uh, for the Polaris Ranger XP one thousand. With Camso Track System at thirty four thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and five cents.
Yeah, I'll second. Uh, Steph and Chris, that, is that motion sufficient? Yeah, great, um, yeah, great, thanks for moving forward on this, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion consideration of an application to the Environmental Protection Agency Solid Waste Infrastructure for Recycling Grant. Uh, to support infrastructure programming capacity and outreach components to Lake County Landfill and Recycling Center, Michael.
Okay, so this, um, EPA grant is a one hundred percent grant, so there's no matching of. It will be given out until December of twenty twenty five.
You wouldn't know if you were awarded?
Yeah.
Okay.
Deadline to, um, apply for it in the coming year, this month. So we're on a kind of tight schedule, that's why we're here asking for the initial to apply for it. We've had a couple of meetings talking about it, with going over some of the, um, things that we're looking at purchasing. Right now, I think we're about three million dollars or more.
We're a little over.
Yeah.
A little over.
And sorry, Jane, I didn't see you also co-listed as, as talking with the item, so yeah.
Yeah, I'll see if I can help.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're looking at probably a new building for a new mer, or because ours is getting aged out, but, um. Structure is just a canvas structure and it's been there for almost ten to twelve years right now. I'm not sure how long it's been, we've already had turns and stuff in it, but, um, by doing that, we could do a whole lot more. Single stream stuff, kind of what we're looking at doing, and inside of the building, so we could just dump it on the ground and. The sort itself, without helping people too, um, everything gets sorted by, um. Mechanical means right now, there's still people that have to pick stuff out.
Yeah.
Um, but we're also looking at several trailers, more trailers so that people haul more stuff, or have more stuff stored to haul, to dump when we can. Right now, we have two CDL drivers at the landfill, so it's a matter of making sure that we got a driver to drive the trucks down. Other things that we're looking for include, um, new compactors. One we have is pretty old and it's actually sinking in the ground right now. That's another reason we need a place with a concrete floor instead of asphalt floor, that is built on, um, existing landfill and not a stack that it really did. So the other things we're looking to do is, um, I know Jeff had mentioned this, when we purchased the air burner, well, since we're getting ready to use it. Maybe we can buy the generator now, have the EPA itself to buy the generator for that, so we can put power into our building or back into the system. And the other thing is anaerobic digester composter. The state said it that way anyways, so we have to figure out how we're going to do it in Lake County. If we wanna keep our landfill, we need to divert more waste from our, our landfill and put it into recycling or other options. I do not believe the way that other counties around us do composting will work in Lake County, because.
It's a cold.
It's a cold. And I don't know if we can keep the, the material up long enough either to digest itself.
Yeah.
That's why we're looking at some mechanical means to do that. With the offgassing from that, I have a chance that we could also make energy out of that, either heat for the building or power to put back into the system also. So we got, we're looking at a lot of options, but we've only got a little time to do it, and we just need your approval to move forward with this grant, yeah.
Um, couple, just for clarification, the equipment. That you're looking for for the mer, are you, would you also have good equipment for composting?
Yes.
For the whole compo.
Uh, yeah, they have a real good digester.
Okay, but, but, okay, and I realize we can't throw everything maybe in the grant, right, cause you, I mean, you had said we.
Well, it's. It's a five million dollar ceiling.
Cause you, yeah, Michael, at one point had said that we need to rep, we need to duplicate all the equipment we have out there, cause we can't cross contaminate with.
Yeah. Right.
All the equipment, so.
So it would be just a loader or a skid steer, just be able to load the material into the, um, digester and then handle the waste coming out, it could be, you just that, I think we did put, we should have put it in there for that.
Yeah.
Also another, at least another skid steering and stuff around.
Mm-hmm.
In the mer, like one that feeds the system and the other one that puts the veils and stuff on the other side.
What about, um, jumping from composting and lining the cells, might answer this question, but what about. Improving the ability to incorporate, um, the sanitation districts for the four of them, I think. Sludge and accepting that and not wanting to put that in the face, right, cause we're looking to divert that, but any possibility of potential for.
So some of the anaerobic digesters I've seen, you can use that material. Um, from Lake County that before, Level that before, is quality of the material, it's not class A, it's class B. That's why other, again, so it, you're gonna sell it to other, um, counties that have composting or composting places. It doesn't need specifications mainly because of, um, metal content.
So the, so, so regardless, and this is just an ongoing conversation that you helped educate me on, right, regardless of what we could do at. Landfill or composting facility, it depends on the class of sludge that the sanitation, sanitation districts produce. Right, and they all produce class B?
That's what I understand.
Okay, okay, okay.
And Climax won't take a picture with class B.
Is there any, hmm. Does anybody incorporate some improvement to like level sands? Solid waste disposal in this, like to partner and add something in their renovation?
I think. I don't know that we can partner, I think the Swiffer grant eligibility requirements are pretty straightforward, that it's. What's the word, um, jurisdictions are the ones that are able to apply, anyone that has. Lawmaking capabilities and a, and another special district can be worked in with that.
They sound eligible, but if you can't part, you're, and you would, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, in the spirit of offering capacity and like trying to get something.
But I'm not. Yeah, I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're in a, just because the timeframe is so tight, I'm not sure that we're in a space to support anything. Very specific, I don't see a reason why we couldn't use some flexible language, um, to, to maybe incorporate that in there as, as a line item. Um, we're doing something similar with community outreach and education in that component, we cannot name. A community partner, we also can't name, you know, if we're gonna partner with a contractor for project management, but we can call out those components. So there could be a way for us to be flexible with how we, how we word that language.
Yeah.
That can give us some space to then approach the sanitation district and have that conversation.
Or even with an eye to future expansion.
Right.
Or subset, you know, so on, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So the harder thing, this is the grant that Jay defended out last year.
Yeah.
They got a totally different grant.
I mean, I don't wanna take away from what we could. Be awarded and what we need, um, but there's, it's just a mountain, but happy, yeah, I can, I can reach out to, um, Sanitation District also and see. If they would be in any place to do something on their own or like work with their community funds. Three days.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we don't add something that doesn't look thought through and hurt the underlying application, right?
Yeah, right, right, yeah. But, yeah, if you guys can keep that kind of in your heads, moving forward through any other opportunities for collaboration. It's a big, big deal.
Yeah, and again, just, I think you said this clearly at the front, that this is, there's no local match on this, for the EPA grant, that's great, yeah, yeah.
There are.
Yeah.
So, I think, yeah, the decision for us is, yeah, just to approve the grant application, so.
Um, I'm hundred percent moved to support staff in submitting an EPA solid waste infrastructure for recycling grant.
Uh, I'll second, and yeah, also really happy to see this moving forward, so.
Thanks for letting me work.
Yeah, yeah, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, so grant, uh, application approval is given, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, discussion consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation to extend the approval of files twenty three dash thirteen and fourteen. Gateway major subdivision and planned unit development sketch plans for one year to give the applicants more time to submit the preliminary plans. Um, Anne was listed here.
Sweet, Melissa.
Yeah, good afternoon, I was gonna fill in for Anne, this is Melissa Kendrick, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, this is, um, a simple request, I think, um, the, uh, the code requirements for the approval of a sketch plan, both for subdivision. And for a PUD, give the applicant a year, um, from that approval to submit the preliminary plan documents. And, um, so the request before you is to extend that approval timeframe for another year, it was approved in October. Of twenty twenty three, so they had till October of twenty twenty four, and so they're asking for October of twenty twenty five. And, uh, staff is in support of this idea. I think one of the things that we wanna see is that there's meaningful movement on the application and it hasn't just gone away. So in this case, um, there is, there's a lot of technical work that's being done and also really bringing the, uh, the necessary developer on board. This is an important project for the community, given the, the implications for affordable housing, so they believe they have the right partner now. Um, to really carry that forward, so the planning commission did hear this and make a favorable recommendation to you. So again, it's to extend that approval and allow them to bring in a preliminary plan before, um, October of twenty twenty five.
Okay, great, thank you, Melissa, um, I don't have any questions on that, and yeah, I looked over the planning commission recommendation, so.
No questions either, sure, um, I'll, uh. Move to approve the request to extend file twenty three, uh, dash thirteen and twenty three dash fourteen. Gateway major subdivision and planned unit development, uh. Sketch plans. Deadline from October of twenty four to October of twenty five.
I'll second.
No further discussion.
Okay, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great, so that, uh, one year extension to October twenty twenty five is approved for files twenty three dash thirteen and twenty three dash fourteen. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, on to discussion consideration of a PSA with High Riders Snowmobiling Club for winter grooming on the East Side Mining District for the twenty twenty four, uh, twenty five. Season, uh, have Anne and Chris Floyd as leading this.
Yeah, Anne has asked me to, to, um, cover for her and try to answer any questions to do that.
Yeah, great.
Um. I just wanna make sure that the, well, first of all, I would love to go through more of a process like the Curling Club and just creating an agreement with an existing partner. Um, than putting out an RFP, um, but all things that said aside, um, the RFP that was posted. Uh, had some language copied from the Mineral Belt Trail RFP put out, um, but also I think was based on, um, a submission from the Snowmobile Club with their scope of work. Um, so I think it seems to very much match, uh, the proposed arrangement from the Snowmobile Club. Um, I know there was one. Thing that the Snowmobile Club wanted to make sure they did not have to do, which I understand, which was, um, the expectation that we had. From Mineral Belt Trail grooming, um, for them to be available as. A contact for complaints, which I don't think the East Side Mineral grooming has the same contention and passions of users. Um, as we have with the Mineral Belt Trail, so that was just one thing I wanted to bring up. Um, I did not read that in their scope, I just wanna make sure that that is not something that.
So they don't wanna be a contact for.
They do not wanna be, no, um, um.
Yeah, okay. For any complaints, yes.
I mean, I don't think, I think it's a different scenario, I think it's a different situation, and I have never heard of, uh, the East Side Groomed County Roads.
What, what?
Getting that same level of. Feedback to the county or the Mineral Belt Trail Club Committee or anything like that, but I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, they do say that they'll do weekly, um. Or as best they can. But I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, they do say that they'll do weekly um or as best they can, some updates on the the uh trail conditions. Um, and what they've done, but I just wanted to make sure that. Anything in excess of that wasn't expected by us, because I don't think that's necessary.
Oh, you'd go back and look and see if we can work with that to make sure that they aren't um aren't listed for that.
Yeah. Um. And I don't know, was there any request for this to be uh longer than a seasonal and annual agreement by them? Does that affect their um the ability for them to continue to get funding year after year?
I don't know if that was part, and I can go back and look, but if you would like to have us add in the option for automatic renewals unless one of the other party. Um, anyone who is on an annual basis for one-year periods unless a party indicates their desire to terminate. And that way it just, we don't have to come and do it every year.
Yeah, that would be great. I think that would be great, because I think they seek out their funding in the spring and summer times and um.
Yeah, yeah.
Continue.
Thank you. Um. Let's see, where is the actual document? All right, with the, okay, I'll move to approve the. Special service agreement uh between county commissioners and High Riders Snowmobile Club. Uh, with the change in language to automatically renew uh annually. Um, as well as being sure that the expectation uh for daily availability of communication for complaints is not. Um, um, assigned to the snowmobile club.
Okay, um, I'll second and just wanted to clarify that we have the name right. So in in the P S A, it or in the agreement, it's High Riders Snowmobile Club and in the agenda item is snowmobiling, but it's one of, I've just.
Yeah, so there was the confusion with that is their legal name is the High Riders Snowmobile Club. Um, but the proposal they gave references snowmobiling club, so I think.
Yeah. Is it? I'm I'm not going to nitpick over that, I just want to make sure, yeah, great, fantastic.
The contract that has the legal.
Um, number that, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great. Uh, so that P S A uh is approved with High Riders Snowmobile Club. Thanks for working with her. Okay, uh, discussion and consideration of a revised agreement with Allison Casillas for legal support to the Lake County Department of Human Services. Uh, child support, child welfare and adult protective services cases.
I mean, you said that, I'll do it and then Laura needs to chime in. So we discovered that um Allison Casillas, who's been a long time outside legal resource for DHS. And for their adult protective services, all those types of things. Um, we discovered that her contract had actually expired or been informally amended to go to a different type of payment structure. So um I worked with Allison to get a new P S A T up that reflects what her structure, payment structure has been, which is a not too see. An annual amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for the full scope of services in lieu of itemized billing on those services at this time. Um, Laura Cruz, the director, had a conversation and and came up to speed on the scope of the services that um Allison is providing. And she believes it's actually a more cost-effective approach than itemized billing based on the volume that Allison is used for those matters. So um Allison has, I know I got her sign copy while we were here today, so she has signed off on the P S A and so we recommend that it be approved. Thank you.
We love Allison. She's amazing. We couldn't do our work without her. She's like a member of our staff.
And I'll just dovetail on that, just a a token nip, I'm happy for her to actually be engaged on another, on the annual basis now, because her husband just retired as a judge down in Summit County. And so we would like to keep her at least for the next year before she decides to retire.
No? All right, um, I'll move to, gosh, I'm sorry. Did you list it as a P S A?
It is P S A.
It is a P S A, all right. I'll move to approve the um P S A between the Board of County Commissioners for the Department of Human Services. And Allison Casillas.
And I'll second.
Nothing further for me?
Okay, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great. So that P S A with Allison Casillas uh is approved, or revised P S A. Um, we did the animal shelter agenda item already. Um, so I think we are on discussion and consideration of an amendment to the P S A with Downtown or L L C. To add transit service to and from Lake County to Ski Cooper for the twenty-four, twenty-five ski season.
Apologize, my memo is lacking. Um, but I think the board is aware of this, so we would amend um. Lake County Government's P S A with Downtown or L L C, who provides our local transit service um to uh add transit service. Um, to and from Lake County to Ski Cooper for the twenty-four, twenty-five ski season. Um, so ideally that will start in January. Ski Cooper has indicated they will pay that cost, the entire cost of that. Um, we've agreed um that that will be, you know, the.
The just to be like the incremental cost of that, so, yeah, like.
Yes, the incremental, the the cost of the addition for for services um to and from Ski Cooper.
Yeah, yeah.
So it'll be a weekend service. Um, the operating hours, Allison, where can you pull that up in just a moment? Um, but we've all agreed Ski Cooper, uh, CEO and I agree that this is, it'll be a test year.
Yeah.
See how it goes, see if it works, if it's functional, and then after that, we can uh um sit down and discuss further um changes to that. Um, Adam Ducharme has helped a lot with this, so Ty Hall with Tennessee Pass, uh Nordic Center is also, you know, been aware of this. Um, Tennessee Pass uh Nordic will not be contributing to this, but um knows that they're realizing the benefit hopefully from this. Um, so after this approval, what we will do is a letter of agreement with the Ski Cooper Board. Um, for them acknowledging that they want this service for this year, uh for for this ski season. Um, and then that they will pay that associated cost uh for this year.
And.
For ski season.
Um, I apologize if I didn't follow a thread. I don't think I was included on some of the maybe correspondence around the operational um plan. Between Ski Cooper and the Forest Service, but we did, I mean, in our last conversation with Ski Cooper and Kirsten, I think that they said that it was already included.
Yes, they did.
And I just want to make sure that that's all, sorry.
No, you were you were right. Um, great question. It is, um, they have included it in um. Uh, what do you call that?
Operational plan?
Their operating, operational plan with the Forest Service. I don't think the Forest Service is, you know, they're supportive of it. Uh, they understand that that's happening. The operating hours would be from seven A M. to six P M. One hour lunch break from twelve to one. Um, and then going going from there, yeah.
Where's the dropout? Is it one dropout point in town, did I? Or does it go through our?
I don't know, I can't remember if it was uh.
I can't, I cannot legally remember if anything was.
There's, I think there was.
There was Safeway or City Hall.
Oh, Safeway, I think maybe.
I think it had been stated as Safeway, but there was some discussion about whether somewhere in town would be better or, you know. Um, I'd and I didn't, yeah, I don't remember a resolution that maybe doesn't even specify, but it's just from one stop in town.
Okay.
Yeah, it will be one stop in town and we can um make sure to clarify that in the um the amendment and um.
Yeah.
The letter of agreement on Ski Cooper.
Okay.
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 Um, this is exciting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and thanks to Ski Cooper for, I mean, not just agreeing, but like ta- taking on the full cost for the test year. That's great.
Yes.
Yeah, I think if, I mean, if there is expansion, like it's a great thing to pilot this if this should mitigate other requirements.
I mean.
Um, on their infrastructure for.
Yeah.
The master development.
Yeah.
Evolution, right?
I mean, it's discussed during the study, it's got to help staff get out there, it's got to reduce parking needs, so.
Mm-hmm. Awesome. Um, I will, uh, I move to approve the amendment to the P S A with Downtown or L L C to add transit service to and from Lake County. Um, for Level Proximity to Ski Cooper for the twenty-four uh twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five ski season.
Great, I'll second.
Nothing further from me.
Okay, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, great. Uh, that amended P S A with Downtown or L L C is approved. Nice. Okay, um, I think that's it, if I'm tracking right, and we're just onto calendar and agenda review, um, and then the consent agenda.
Okay. This is easy to see. Oh, here's the mouse.
Oops.
Thank you. Uh-huh.
So next Monday, um, the only thing I'm showing is Lake County School to straightforward education work session. Um, Tuesday, of course, is Christmas Eve. Wednesday is Christmas Day. Um, I'm assuming community copy is canceled.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll take that off.
But Matt makes me in the following, so we can't assume the first will be used to save his entire lives.
That's right, that's right, that's right. I'll take care of that. Um, at the twenty-sixth, we did, um. Talk about moving the two work sessions to the twenty-sixth since they were on Christmas Eve. Um, but nothing has been requested for either of those, so Liz suggested pulling those off, so that is what we did. Um, unless you guys have a different direction for that. Um, twenty-seven, um, children to like secondary coffee, twenty-seven. And so, so, um, given that, we have no attendance to fourth, fifth, eleventh, um.
Easy, easy, easy.
Should we, should we just to, just while we're here, should we discuss the agenda for the special meeting on the thirtieth? Just success, uh, if we're not meeting next week, might be good just to nail it down while we're here?
Yeah, sure, um, it's kind of a dropped right now.
And while you're pulling that up, I'll know, I I'll definitely, I'll be out in Salida at a Sangre Cristo board meeting, but I'll step out, yeah.
On the, on the thirtieth, okay.
Yeah, so I'll I'll call in for the special meeting, but maybe.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, sure.
Mm-hmm. I'll be here.
Okay, so public care for the discussion and consideration of adoption of Resolution twenty-two forty-four dash forty-seven. Resolution of Lake County, Colorado approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado. And adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado. For the fiscal period beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-four and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-four. With Tim, Candace and Will.
That's just our year-end uh budgets up to now.
Yeah.
Um, I went ahead and added this on to D A after our conversation, discussion and conspiracy of a loose agreement with Mount Arapaima.
Is that, are you pretty certain that they'll be ready for that at that date or, I mean, not that I'm super concerned, but.
Yeah, yeah, talked with. Uh, I talked with Kim uh today, I'll probably call her again uh either today or tomorrow. Talked through some other things, um. Seems trending towards approval, um.
When I reviewed the request for changes, the list and I didn't see the materials used that we can.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, a discussion and consideration of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement uh between the county and the city of Lake Bell for the animal shelter.
Is that broad enough? Like if we're gonna be making a decision on this status of the March letter, do we need to add in a little something? Or is that, I mean, it, I guess, the letter was about the I G A.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I would, and I'm gonna reach out to the city of Channing right after this meeting to get that teed up.
Okay.
In hopes that we'll be able to go along the amendment for the extension and then.
Okay, yeah, maybe just sort of having our brains if we need to broaden that title.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'll do your, definitely useful, yes.
Yes, I'll let you know, yeah, the the specific we need to expand that image beyond, do you?
Okay.
And then, um, we do have a request um to hopefully squeeze on this agenda from uh Laura Cruz with DHS for, um. Is it with Dr. Gibson, is that correct?
Yeah, to do um our site evaluations for our A P S class, so it's a contract with them, just as a little timely and.
I told her I'd be in touch with the office in a few uh in time, um, and if it's okay with you guys, if we done on that.
I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Um, unless you want to do a crime.
On a, oh, on the twi- yeah, I think we're, hmm.
The twenty of this.
We have all the housing.
We've had a special Thursday, we've got a special Thurs- the twi- yeah.
I don't think any of the evaluations will happen for Christmas, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
To do a twi- yeah.
We did the the specials uh. Thursday or Friday.
Well, there's one Thursday that the sheriff's office requested for a time sensitive contract that we need to have approved that day for the body camera, so.
Yes, for accident, oh. Yeah, I sent you guys an email to make sure that that was okay, but I put a hold on your calendar for that.
Oh. With that.
You can go on and take a few minutes. It's a renewal of the one they have, it's a new construction.
Yeah, but it has to be.
Done that day.
Done that day.
In order to lock in the price that's involved.
Okay.
So Thursday and Friday?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
This week, not so easy. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the one on the twentieth is, um, all the housing stuff.
Mm-hmm, okay. Sounds good.
Cool.
Um, all right, thank you, Sandra.
You are welcome.
And then I. Just a few minutes?
Yes.
Um, the, okay, let me look at the agenda, I don't know, I'm really, I actually have this for you, Cindy. It's very easy. Um, was and.
So this is on April sixteen?
Yeah, this is on the April sixteen. Um. My notes may be wrong, but just item number six on the Vera Desk, is it Vera Desk?
Vera Desk.
Does anybody have a recollection of that? Vera Desk, L L C, um, because mine, my, I. And it's not, my notes said something like, but that could have just been me hearing it wrong, but I don't.
Sixteen?
On April sixteen.
Are you questioning whether the name is?
Yeah, is the name correct? I just don't know if that's the correct.
Oh.
Under, or like Vanna, Vanna. Um, and then on item eleven, Cindy, I think the motion was pretty specific to, I mean. Up to the fifteen thousand dollars, um, I believe. Um, and that's all that I had there, and I'm sorry I overhit you those other minutes. So, do you want me to send you this too, or it's just the, okay?
Yeah, it's okay, that one's just the one, it's okay.
It's just the one, because I didn't get Cindy's email until after we posted the agenda, so, um, I guess we get.
Yeah.
Something about adding those to the agenda special.
Yeah.
And do the.
Yeah.
Twentieth, thirtieth.
Let's do the thirtieth, let's do that. And then are we, do you have any idea where we caught up on this?
I know Tracy, it's that she was caught up with hunters.
Oh, that's good.
So I don't know where she's at with hers. You guys just seem to be having meetings, well, I can catch up.
Yeah.
Wow, I'm tried.
I know, right? Um. Okay, well, that's good to hear. That seemed like a huge.
That was, that was good.
Task to do, and I felt like we were pretty caught up, maybe, um, other than that, but, okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Um, did you see, find that Vera, Vera, Vanna Desk?
V A R I Desk.
Vanna, okay, Vanna Desk?
Yeah.
Desk.
And.
Yeah.
It's correct, it's correct, you know, the change. It's correct, it's correct. You don't have to change.
That's what it is in eighteen.
Oh, so that one's okay.
That one is okay. I just.
Okay.
Very good. All right, um I have nothing else.
Yeah.
Um I'll move to approve the consent agenda with a small uh correction to item eleven on the minutes.
Great, I'll second. Uh call for vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh so the consent agenda is approved, the small correction. Um and with that, at three thirty-one PM on December seventeenth, we are adjourned.
All right.
Go, I thought it was like.
Oh, no, we're not.